Hey, Madam Chair, we are now recording.
All right, awesome. Let me go ahead and call this session the Oregon Aviation Board into into session. And today is a working session, so no public comment at the beginning, just us delving right into some issues to talk with some partners out there and talk with ourselves about how we're doing and how we may do it for the future. So before we start though, if you have any electronics out there, if you could mute them as a courtesy to everybody on Zoom today, that would be great. And then I will hand it over to you, Kathy, for a Did I freeze up?
I froze up. Okay, so unstable, so I'm gonna try to fix that. I'm getting a new modem here pretty soon. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Um. So Chair Meeker.
Here.
Vice Chair, Vince Pernato.
Oh, Vince will not be with us. He's hosting his son's wedding rehearsal dinner tonight.
Good times. John Barcelou.
I'm here.
Tom Kruger.
Here.
Doug Ferguson. Hilda Pareo.
Here.
Did I miss anybody? That's it. And then just for the record, Mike Oliver, who is recommended for the vacant board position is on. So welcome, Mike. Glad to have you on. And Chair Meeker, we've been joined by Amira Streeter from the Governor's Office. So I'd like to turn it over to you to introduce our Transportation Policy Advisor.
Well, that's awesome. Let's go over to that right now. We understand that you're there's we just recently came underneath your portfolio. Is that true?
Yeah, that's right. Very nice to meet everyone.
That's awesome. And your natural resources, is that what I understand? Is your also?
Yeah, so my old role was as the Natural Resources Policy Advisor. I've done that role. I've been in that role for three years now and just started my new job as the Climate, Energy and Transportation Policy Advisor on Friday. This past Friday.
That's that's awesome. Heck of a portfolio you have there. So if there's anything that we can do, if you have any questions, please feel free to reach out. We'll make ourselves available to you at any time because you've got a heck of a portfolio and imagine you're a tad bit busy.
Yes. Well, thanks for having me here today. I'll just be listening in and then step away, I think. I can't stay for the whole meeting. But I'll just be here for the first hour.
Okay. Well, awesome. It's like I said, it's great to have you here. So let's get started. We do have you here. So Kathy, I believe we're first up, we're going to take a little bit of a look back to see how we did over the last couple of years and during this COVID time period. True?
Yes, Madam Mayor and Madam Mayor. Wow, that that went to my life. Madam Chair. Okay, and I'll turn it over to the director who are you ready to screen share, Betty, or would you like me to screen share?
I'm gonna try it. Okay, so do you see a screen that says Department of Aviation, October 6th work session?
Bingo.
Okay, all right. So good morning, everyone. So this morning, we're going to talk a little bit about how we've done over the past two years, some of the challenges that we are facing and how we what our plans are for recovery from those challenges. All right, let me see if I can get the screen to work. Okay. Okay, so again, a report card. Challenges and path to recovery. So the the goals that we had for the 1921 session and again for our new board members, we budget on a two-year basis. So we report on a two-year basis, and this is the goals that we presented to the board about eighteen or twenty months ago. And so the short term, we had a half a dozen goals, and those were no loss of public use airports, continuing our grant program, preserving existing infrastructure, elimination of the fuel tax sunset, retaining our ability to meet our state and federal regulatory requirements, revising leasing rates, getting an ability to charge a fee for doing obstruction evaluations, and then a one-time approval for transferring some existing cash balance for operating expense. And then I'll go into these other goals here in a moment. So how did we do? So again, at the beginning of the pandemic, about eighteen nineteen months ago, when we set these goals, our goals were pretty basic. We're saying we want to not lose any public use airports. So at the beginning of the pandemic, the revenue was uncertain for the agency and and for airports in general. And so our goal was no loss of public use airports, which were which we have not lost any airports in Oregon during that time period, continuation of the grant program. Even though our revenues have had pretty significant declines over the past eighteen months, we were still able to continue the grant program. And not only that, in 2021, we awarded the highest amount of grants that we have ever done, and that was two and a half million dollars. One of our goals was to preserve Oregon's existing pavement. And we offer a program here within ODA for pavement evaluations and pavement preservation projects for crack fill project. For nineteen and twenty-one, we had sufficient funding to be able to continue those at the same levels that we had done previously, starting in our twenty-one twenty-three budget. That funding is cut in half. We knew that that was coming, so we attempted a federal earmark for about ten million dollars to replace or supplement the our small one million a year grant program. That federal earmark gained the governor's approval, but it failed to get any of our congressional delegation to take that as an earmark. We will attempt it again. And if if the Senate decides it's going to do earmarking, this is still one that's still in play with them. But at this moment, we think the earmark failed. Elimination of the fuel tax sunset. Despite a, you know, a last minute detour and a little bit of drama, the program has extraordinarily strong support, bipartisan support within the legislature. If we had not had that last minute detour and drama, I think it would have passed easily. In the end, it passed on the last day. But we got through. It was a tight vote, but we still got it done. We got it across the finish line. So goal number five, ability to to meet our state and federal regulatory requirements. As I'll go into detail in a little while, we have had a twenty percent staffing cut, and that has affected our ability to to meet our requirements. We still meet them, but not at the same level that we had in previous years. Yet we had hoped to revise our leasing rates and our policy that we've had unfortunately had to put on pause again due to our limited staffing. So goal seven was a fee for obstruction evaluations. We do about eleven hundred of them a year. We're required by statute to do them, and we've been doing them without cost. And so we asked the legislature in the twenty-one session for permission to charge a fee. That was passed towards the end of session, and the next step for that will be doing some administrative rulemaking. And then about a year from now, we'll be starting to be able to recover our cost of doing obstruction evaluations. And then finally, we asked for one-time approval to take some existing uncommitted cash balance out of the grant program to help with our operating expenses, and that needed legislative approval. And we got that in August. Okay. So before I go on, is there any questions on this slide from any board member?
Yeah, Betty, I have one. The Manning within ODA has been an issue ever since I've been on this board, and it was called out officially, we know, and Carmen For did the report on the Aurora State Airport that the state legislator had asked her to do. It's been called out more than once in various other reports. You know, even since then, you've, I think, been two more slots are slated to go away. I guess the question would be is how do we keep talking about it? How do we mount it? How do we mount some kind of coalition to kind of get some attention? That you cannot, ODA can't operate in the current staffing levels they have. We've got to do something beyond bringing it up here at the board level multiple times.
And and I agree. So to restore the positions and and I'm going to go into this in a little more detail in a little bit, but at one point, we had seventeen people on staff here. We're now at twelve and a half. For the twenty-eight airports that we own or operate, we basically have three people to operate and maintain those four people total within that section. Three of them that that operate and maintain the fields, and these twenty-eight airports are scattered all across the state. So we spend as much time traveling to some of these airports than we do as we do actually doing work at the airports. To get additional staffing back, we need funding. And so either we have to find additional revenue sources or we have to be able to increase our fees, or so we just need to find the funding for it. I think we've got a couple of legislators that recognize that that we've been given almost an impossible task with twenty-eight airports and three people maintaining those airports to try to to help. But again, everything comes down to funding. And I'm going to talk to you in a little bit about a legislative concept that we would like to take forward in the twenty-three session to gain permanent additional general funding. Again, for for our new board members, we get no state funding, either general fund or lottery fund, and we operate solely, almost solely off of the tax on the aviation fuels. And that is insufficient, and it is unstable, as we found over the past eighteen months. So we're going to attempt a run at getting some permanent general funding that would allow us to bring staffing back up to at least to our previous level of the three positions we cut. And ideally, if we could find it, we would fund a four additional positions. So Martha, Chair Meeker, did I answer your question?
Well, is it possible to look at solutions in toto? I know you've got your preferred solution of going for general funding. But can can the board get a total look about how much money you think we could raise if we increase, you know, leasing rates or or we increased registration? I know it's middling, but let's go ahead and get a total look about everything we could do and the money that that would raise. You know, the money we is there legislative ask for increasing the administrative overhead on the grant program? What can we raise with that? What can we raise with increasing rates? Is there anything else we can do? You know, we asked for a fee for the obstruction evaluation, so we got it. Is there anything else we can pursue? I know that the general fund is the most attractive, but I would like a broader look about everything that ODA could do. Just in case if the legislature says no on the general funding, what are we going to turn to next?
Okay. Certainly, and we can go in more detail that at the next board meeting, but I've got just a summary a little bit later in this presentation of of some ways that we can increase the revenue for the agency and also some contingency plans if the revenues don't return. Where else would we turn to for for funding the agency operations?
Okay, super. And you know, we don't have to do it now because we're not going to, you know, anything introduced into legislation isn't going to be until twenty twenty-three. But we need to start getting not just one or two options. We need to get a full board of options, at least put on paper, so we know we've talked about them. I would like to get a broader look at what we can do for getting your staffing up beyond just one or two good ideas if we can. That would be awesome.
Okay, we'd be happy to.
Okay, any other comments, questions from other board members?
I don't have any other questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, John. Okay, so moving on. All right, so that that was our short-term goals and our midterm goals for eighteen thirty-six months was are to rebuild the operating reserve. So again, when we set these goals eighteen twenty months ago at the beginning of the pandemic, and we were anticipating but not knowing how deep of a drop in revenues there was going to be from the aviation fuel tax, we anticipated that that we might have to drop below our our goal of keeping a half million dollars in the operating cash reserve. But we were able to, excuse me, throughout the eighteen months, we were able to keep it at the five hundred thousand or above that. We dropped once for a few days, but for overall, we kept it at at least five hundred thousand. And that's been sustained throughout the eighteen months. The next goal was to start to begin to build a reserve for the Aurora runway extension. At present, we are unable to do this because of the revenue loss, and I'll go into some more detail on that in just a little bit. We would like to be able to secure some funding for resiliency studies and improvements. And those are in progress right now. And again, I'll go into detail on that in just a little bit. And then we would like to get the Cape Blanco Airport to become eligible for federal funding. And that is something that we are just an effort that we are just starting now. Our long-term goals are, as the revenues improve, complete the delayed projects and restore the cut positions. Again, we cut twenty percent of our staff, which is three positions, and we paused several capital construction projects. Those projects are still paused until we are certain that the revenues are going to recover and are sustained at that recovered level. Then if Connect Oregon returns, we wanted to resume some projects. At the time that we were setting the goals, we did not know if Connect Oregon was ever going to come back. But we're pleased to say it has come back, and it is now accepting applications through the end of this month. And and we are going to be applying, four of our airports are going to be applying for Connect Oregon grants, and we will know later next spring whether or not those applications are successful. So we also in the long-term plan, we have a runway extension planned for Aurora, and we had hoped to be able to do, excuse me, weather reporting equipment at most of the public use airports. But again, this was funding dependent. We submitted a request for a federal earmark, and we were unsuccessful with that request. So any questions from board members on any of these? All right, seeing none. Okay. Next, I just want to give you a summary of how we did for our finances over the last biennium, last two-year period. So the at the end of we budget on our fiscal year starts on July one. So on their ending balance on June thirtieth of twenty was six hundred ninety-one thousand. Our ending balance on for twenty-one was a million. And our current cash balance as of about a week ago is at a million four. And so some of that is because of federal funding. And then also, we just did a transfer out of the grant program into the operating budget, and I'll give you some details on that in just a little bit. So in recap, we had revenues of seventeen point four million, which includes the federal funding. We had expenses of fourteen and a half, and then it's broken down into our operating budget was about five million. Our pavement management program was just over two. Our grant programs of Core, SOAR, and ROAR were two and a half million for Core, a little over half million for SOAR, and a hundred and thirty-six thousand for ROAR. And then our GA entitlement and capital improvement projects was two point six million. So again, because our budget is is very dependent upon the fuel tax revenue, about two-thirds of our operating budget is is off of the two fuel tax revenue, and a hundred percent of our grant program is funded through the fuel tax revenue. At the beginning of the nineteen twenty-one biennium, we were estimating that there was going to be thirteen million dollars in revenue. The actual was nine point seven. So it was about three and a half, or actually, three and a quarter million less than what we what we thought we were going to have. So again, because we are a state agency and we are not allowed to deficit spend, we have to match our expenses to revenue. So we had to do we transferred some money out of out of reserves. We got some federal assistance, and then the remaining gap we filled by cutting staffing positions, slowing spending, deferring maintenance, and pausing capital construction projects. So are there any questions from board members about the financial recap?
No, I don't have one.
Okay.
Then.
And Kathy, I'm not able to see all of the board members. So if you are able to see them, I can see some, but not everyone. So I don't see any other hands raised or anybody else. But if I'm missing someone, Kathy, if you could let me know.
Will do. Okay, we're good right now.
Okay. All right. If there's no questions about the financial recap. Okay, just briefly, I wanted to give you an update on the Aurora legal challenges. So again, for our audience members that are and board members that are new to this, just as a summary, the first legal challenge was in the Land Use Board of Appeals, and that ruling was in December of twenty twenty. That decision was then appealed to the Court of Appeals. On the first attempt was the was the ruling was in June sixteenth of twenty twenty-one. And the Court of Appeals reversed and remanded the Luba, excuse me, the the Luba decision. There was a reconsideration request in Court of Appeals two, and that ruling was on August fourth, in which the Court of Appeals reaffirmed their earlier decision. Then the Supreme Court filing, we are filing today requesting a Supreme Court review. Some private parties have already filed a petition for Supreme Court review as well, and they filed that, I think, a couple of weeks ago. So the Supreme Court side, we are filing today. Then on Luba two, on the Supreme Court ruling, we are only asking the court to review a couple of items within the Court of Appeals ruling. The remaining items will go back to Luba on a on a remand, a reverse and remand. So we will be going back to Luba on the remaining items. But that is paused until the Supreme Court decides whether or not they're going to hear our request. And then we also have a couple of cases in Circuit Court, and those are paused now until the Supreme Court decision as well. Excuse me. So at our last meeting, we talked about potential remedies for the the Court of Appeals ruling, and there are three possible repairs, and those are judicial, legislative, and administrative. We are pursuing two of those judicial via the Supreme Court and administrative through the Department of Land Conservation Development. And we had asked DLCD to consider a rulemaking on the question of what is a is permitting a larger class of aircraft? So DLCD told me a couple of days ago that they have decided they will take it. And we have a placeholder for a little over a year from now in early twenty twenty-three because of their current workload. That's the soonest they could could fit our request in. So we will be still pursuing the judicial review, but we're also moving forward with the administrative repair as well. Excuse me. So at the last meeting, Chair Meeker had asked that I come back to you with some lessons learned from the Court of Appeals ruling. And because we are currently in litigation, I'm limited on what I can discuss with you, but there were some low-hanging fruits. A couple of items I wanted to bring to you to say, what are we doing differently now than what we were doing, you know, even two years ago? And so out of that Court of Appeals ruling, one of the one of the findings they had was that when the board adopts the the master plan, it should be adopting findings of compatibility and compliance concurrently with the master plan. So in the Aurora case, the the master plan was adopted in two thousand and eleven, and then the findings of compliance and compatibility were adopted in nineteen. And so that was one of the topics that came up in the Court of Appeals ruling. And what we have been doing for the past year and a half is when we bring a master plan to the board for approval, it comes concurrent with findings of compatibility and compliance. So you're doing them all in the same the same time. And then another finding is that when the board adopted the Aurora master plan in eleven, the FAA subsequently made some changes to it. So now we will not bring something to the board until the FAA has given their final approval to a plan. And we've been doing that now for about a year and a half. On the last four or five master plans we brought before the board, we bring them to you after the FAA has, excuse me, has has done their final approval. And then finally, there was some confusion about the some motions that the that board members had made when they were adopting the master plan. And so one of the things I had asked staff to do is when we when we give you, we ask the board to take action, we give you an option of different options of whether to approve, disapprove, or send back, but we give you a motion script so that there is clarity as to what it is that the board is doing. And so it's not it's clear and it's accurate exactly what the board is is doing. So those were some of the low-hanging fruit items that I want to just briefly talk to you about. Once we get through all the legal challenges, we will do more of a briefing to the board on on specific findings within those those legal rulings. For now, does any board member have a question about anything on this slide?
I do, Betty. I copy all on the board motions, but that was really never brought up in any court issue. I got it, the staff that had some issues, but we'll follow the script. I don't believe that was ever really an issue about whether the board appropriately passed a motion or not. So I just want to make that clear for the record. But the biggest one, after talking with the lawyer more than once, we should have had in there on the master plan is we just may need to make a note that says that we will do appropriate land use, you know, coordination with the county, should we pursue any particular issue like the I believe one of the things the lawyer brought out that said that we should have done in the master plan was to just put in a little line at the when we talked about the EFU land and what we would need to do with it if we had the runway extension was that when if we would approach an appropriate land use coordination with the county if this option was taken. I just want to make sure that we get with the lawyer and include that line in the master plan, so we don't have any issues with that ever again. And that seemed like a really easy kill, and the lawyer was very much. I mean, that was called out in the Court of Appeals ruling specifically. So if we could get make sure we just have that language in the next master plan, I would appreciate it a lot.
Okay. Okay. Are there any other board members have a question or comment on this slide? If not, I'm going to move on. If not, I'm going to move on.
Nope, I don't have it.
Nope, okay. Okay, then moving on. Okay. Okay, so moving on to some of the challenges that are facing the agency. In the short term, the immediate short term, as in within the next two weeks, is a potential for a, a loss, turnover in staff. Some of you may be aware that the governor has issued an executive order that all state employees in the executive branch, which ODA is one, must be either vaccinated or have applied for and received a medical or religious exception by October 18th. The governor's executive order was slightly amended by a, an agreement with the union that represents our employees so that you have to have started the vaccination by October 18th rather than completed it. So statewide, there's about forty-two thousand employees in the executive branch. And as of last Friday, about sixty percent of them had either submitted proof of vaccination or a request for a religious or medical exemption. Within ODA, we are at sixty-four percent of our employees have, have done one of those three things. We are now a week and a half away from October 18th, from the deadline of either having started the vaccination or have been granted the exception. And for employees that have not done any of those three things, they are subject to separation. So my hope is that our remaining employees will go ahead and submit something. But failure to comply with the governor's executive orders for a state employee means you're subject to separation. So again, my hope is that the remaining staff will go ahead and get something submitted, and we will not have to look at, at a separation. But that's the immediate challenge in front of us. If they do separate, there will be a period of time until we can recruit and fill and get that position trained, where the remaining staff will have to pick up that workload. Then the other challenges still facing is, you know, the fuel tax revenues are, are showing signs of improvement, but they're still unstable. And there is uncertainty about, over the next six months, is there going to be another drop in, in, in the fuel taxes? There's just a lot of uncertainty about that, that revenue source. So, and over the past eighteen months, we were, we have backfilled the revenue loss with federal funds and also with pulling money out of, out of our grant program to cover operating expenses. If we have to continue to do that beyond another year or two, there will not be sufficient remaining funds to be able to continue the grant program, either at its current level or even at a reduced level, if we have to keep pulling money out to, to supplement the, the operating budget. So the Aurora Airport legal costs continue to place a strain on our operating budget, and we are deferring repairs and capital improvements until our revenue stabilizes and returns back to the level it was prior to the pandemic. So the short-term fixes for those, again, I mentioned we've reduced the staff by twenty percent. We've reduced the, our inspection frequency and our maintenance frequency, not to an unsafe level, but we're just not mowing as often. We're not getting out and inspecting our airports as frequently as we used to. The pavement management program for pavement evaluations and pavement repairs for this biennium is cut in half. We'll still be able to do it, but again, not at the frequency or the level that we used to. We try on our, excuse me, for our, our maintenance crews when we go out, ideally, we try to send two people out in the field for safety reasons. Again, in the summer, we have a, a seasonal helper, so we can, most of the time, we can do a two-person crew. But for fall, winter, and early spring with three people, we are sometimes sending people out on one person to, to an airport. And ideally, we would prefer not to have to do that. We would like to keep a crew size of two. We've eliminated our outreach and education programs. We've eliminated most of travel and training. Some of you have, have probably heard and from stakeholders that it is taking us an unacceptable amount of time to respond to their requests. And this is a function of staffing. An example I will give you is our state airport manager is responsible for 270 leases across the 28 airports. When tenants want a change or when we get new tenant requests, we are often not able to be timely in that simply because we have one person for 270 leases. And on top of those duties, he has all the, the duties of, of managing these 28 airports. So it, it's not ideal by any stretch, but this is the, these are the Band-Aids as we get, try to get through, you know, through the short term. Are there any questions on this one?
Eddie?
Sure.
Yes, I, I understand the, the bullet you have about the continued legal cost that we're placing a strain, but we have legislative relief coming on that. I would like, if, do we need to get with Senator Johnson again to find an update? How are we pursuing that? That, that should not be a bullet anymore. I mean, we should see the funds coming for that. How do we get an update? And how do we continue pushing the legislature to remind them that we need that?
Okay. So Senator Johnson has, has indicated that she would have desire to try to help us with some additional one-time supplemental funding to cover these costs. I think if she is successful, that will be in either E-Board or during the February session.
And we got her just to, to, I mean, she's doing a lot for us. I don't want to just sit back on our hunches and not, not help her out as she tries to help us.
Okay. I, I talked to her, gosh, the last time I talked to her was yesterday, the day before yesterday, on an unrelated topic, but I will continue to, to remind her about this and, and to thank her for her support. Do you want something further than that?
Well, like I said, I still want to get with you and get with the Legislative Fiscal Office. I just think we need to push harder. You know, there's money to be had out there, but only for those who push. So I, I think we have got to start nosing in and start talking with people and not, and not waiting for them to save us. So once again, by December, if on the December board meeting, I would like you to give us a, a who you've talked to and what's the latest status on the additional funds to cover the legal costs for Aurora. And there was also going to be funds to help tide the staff over for a year. Let's find out where we are specifically on that. So we need, the board needs to know, is it a concern or is it not a concern? I was under the understanding after talking with Senator Johnson that it was not a concern anymore, but it seems to be a concern to you still. So I just, I want to make sure the board's doing everything we can to get you the funds that you need to operate.
Okay. Okay. Any question, any comments or concerns from any other board member? Okay, seeing none, moving on. So we talked about this briefly earlier, but this is just, you know, a slide to show you our current staffing levels versus where we were in the past. At one point, we had seventeen employees. The moment our current staffing level is twelve and a half, and that doesn't include our summer, it does include our, our summer seasonal, but doesn't include, we have a couple of temps. And so this kind of just tells the story of, you know, where we were before and where we're at right now on staffing levels. Okay, so midterm, some of the, the big challenges facing us is that of the 28 airports that we operate, four of them have runways that are at or near their end of life. Three of those airports are not eligible for federal funding. So any repairs to those airports would be with agency funds or state funds. So those four airports that runways are at the end of, at or near their end of life include Oak Ridge and Prospect, and then Cape Blanco and Aurora. Aurora is, is the only airport that is eligible for federal funding. So the other three, we are going to attempt for Cape Blanco and Prospect to see if we can get Connect Oregon funds. If we are unsuccessful, we will try again. And if we are unsuccessful, then at that point, we will, if we're not able to get some additional state funding for it, at some point, we're going to have to look at possibly closure of these, these airfields as the runways become unusable. And again, but for Aurora's case, that is eligible for federal funding, and we are actively pursuing funding for replacement of that runway. Okay. So long-term, some of the challenges facing the agency. One of the biggest challenges facing the agency, again, relates to our dependence upon the aviation fuel tax to fund our operating and our grant program. Ninety-seven percent of the fuel sold in Oregon is jet fuel, and half of that is sold at a single airport at Portland International. Following, in, in, in a little bit, we're going to talk more about the effects of a, of a, a major seismic event on, on this, on the state, on the aviation system. But I understand that ninety percent of the petroleum fuels in Oregon are stored and distributed out of a single large fuel farm that sits on the, on the banks of the Willamette River in downtown Portland. If, when we have that magnitude eight or nine earthquake, it's going to result in something called liquefaction, which means soils, if you just imagine what soils, and imagine chocolate pudding, that's what will happen during this earthquake. The, the fuel farm at Portland sits on tops of soils that are highly liquefiable, and are, then that fuel farm is expected to slide into the river with most of those, that fuel storage going with it. And the few tanks that are remaining are expected to not be usable because of the resulting fire that's going to happen when those tanks slide into the river. So ninety percent of Oregon's fuel capacity will be gone, including for aviation fuels. So following this magnitude nine, eight or nine event, we would, we are expecting to see an almost total loss of revenue for the agency for one to two years, and then greatly reduced tax revenue loss for up to five years after that until that, that fuel farm can be replaced somewhere else and until aviation fuels are available again. In addition to losing almost all of our revenue, we were looking at, for the, the office building that we're at in Salem is sixty-five years old. It's, it's an unreinforced building, and it is not expected to be able to survive even a moderate earthquake. So we're looking at total loss of the building that we're in. We would be unlikely to, to rebuild. We own the land, but it has, it has a reversion clause that if we don't use it for a state aviation agency, it reverts back to the city of Salem without compensation. So we would likely go into, be tucked into a corner of an ODOT building somewhere. That is a significant risk facing the agency as long as we are dependent upon a fuel tax for, for most of our operating revenue. A couple other long-term issues facing us is.
Real quick?
Sure.
I, I got the issue with, you, you would lose your revenue. But once again, that you would, I can't imagine our, our state would just let ODA perish. I understand you, you, you calling out the threats to your, to your finances. What would, what do we expect the state of Oregon to help ODA at that time? I mean, there would be federal funds coming in. I understand you setting the very dire picture. But on the flip side, I don't see any discussion of, of where we think help would come from.
Okay. So again, we are, we would, we would hope that the state would provide interim funding out of general fund. But immediately following the event, state revenues will be significantly impacted as well. All state agencies across the board, if they're, if they're located west of the Cascades, are all going to be impacted by this, and we're all going to have needs, and we're all going to be looking to the legislature for financial assistance in meeting those needs. I would hope that the legislature would find value in the aviation agency. And in a little bit, I'm going to show you why I think we will be critical to Oregon's recovery after the event. And I would hope that they would fund, find some funding for us. But this, again, the point of this is that this is a, you know, a, a significant event that's within our planning horizon, and we need to start thinking about and addressing it now rather than waiting to cross, if we wait to cross the bridge, when we get there, that bridge is going to be collapsed and in the river. And so we need to start having that discussion now.
So once again, looking to the future, other accidents have happened to other airports. I mean, they've had hurricanes hit, we've had major, you know, earthquakes are not the only thing that take out airports and the like. What has the FAA done, you know, when Sandy hit the East Coast? What happened when, you know, hurricanes down in, in Louisiana closes that national airport? What can we expect from the FAA? I mean, there's been natural catastrophe after natural catastrophe after natural catastrophe. What, what can we expect from the FAA? That, they, they should be able to at least give you kind of some kind of idea on what they may be able to help after a, an event like this as well. Because I, I truly don't think it's up to ODA to secure funds to, to go this on your own after a, an emergency like this. I do believe there will be federal agencies and, you know, state agencies that will help. I just, my guess is we can ask the FAA for some kind of idea of what we may get.
Historically, the FAA has not funded recovery efforts from a natural disaster.
Let me not say, let's just say the federal government. Generally, the federal government makes funds available. What, I wonder if there's anything that we can look towards for some kind of idea of what the, what we may be looking at if this does happen?
Sure, there are other agencies that do funding, notably FEMA, Federal Emergency Management Agency, provides significant relief to cities and states that, that experience natural disasters. I, I personally went through a, a major, two major natural disasters that were hurricane-related with flooding. And so there is funding there long-term, but immediately, and it's not for operating expenses, it never has been, it's for recovery-related items and cleanup-related items, but not operating expense. So there are some federal resources, and immediately following the event, there's going to be a, a huge influx of federal resources in the immediate response and recovery of, of basic survival needs. And then longer term, there may be some federal assistance with rebuilding. But as far as operating expenses of this agency, I don't know that, I don't believe that, that FEMA would, whatever, will cover that. And certainly FAA has not ever funded anything like that, so.
It'd just be an interesting question to ask the Legislative Office about how you, you're expected to, in this planning, when we're going to have, I know there's multiple exercises going on and the like. It'd be interesting if you asked them how they think they're going to fund staff agencies, because you won't be the only one.
Yes, I absolutely agree. And our assumption is that this office, our office building will not survive. In a moment, I'm going to talk to you about a legislative request to try to get this building to a level where we could at least get out of the building when it starts to collapse. But if that is unsuccessful, then as this building goes, the occupants that are in it will likely go as well. So, and, and I don't think that's hyperbole. I think it's, it's just reality is this building won't, will not survive. And if we're inside when it happens, then many of us will not survive either. So on that kind of depressing note, airspace conflicts with, with wind turbines, you know, House Bill 2020 was passed in this legislative session that will encourage and mandate Oregon to switch to cleaner renewable.
renewable energy sources for, for electricity within the next twenty years. And a lot of that is going to be supplied through solar and wind. We already have a pretty significant wind turbine wind farms all up, up along the Columbia Gorge. And we anticipate seeing a lot more of this as Oregon starts transitioning to cleaner, sustainable energy sources. And we are, our agency will work as closely as we can with other state agencies to find a peaceful coexistence between the wind turbines and the solar farms and, and aviation. I believe it's achievable. I don't think it's easy, but I believe it's achievable as more and more of these wind farms go up and as they are at much higher heights. I think we've talked previous meetings with you about up in the Columbia Gorge, for example, around the Wasco Airport, those existing two hundred foot wind turbines are being switched out to five hundred foot turbines. We've had interest shown for offshore wind turbines and, and turbines in the height of, you know, six hundred to twelve hundred feet. Again, we will find a way to peacefully coexist, but we will, will also focus on preserving airspace for aviation and minimizing the conflict between these, these massive wind turbine structures in close proximity to airports. And then finally, one of the other long-term challenges, you may have seen the, the, just the, the explosive growth in the use of, of unmanned aerial systems or drones into the, the delivery of goods to consumers. We think that's going to continue. And, and it has a potential for conflict, airspace conflicts when the, when the warehouses are in close proximity to an airport, if they are using a UAS for that delivery. And those, those UASs or drones are low to the ground, they're small, they're hard to see by aircraft. If it's in close proximity to an airport, there's a potential for conflict there. And the example I will use is Salem. There is an Amazon warehouse about two thousand feet just off the, the end of the primary runway at Salem. If that is used as the distribution point, then we have a thousand drones a day departing that one, and they're coming across the, the approach, the final approach for Salem at the same height that the aircraft are at, then that, that presents a, a potential conflict. And so we just need to be starting to address the issue of the explosive growth of UASs and protecting airspace around our airports. Okay, any questions from any board members on that?
So I just had a, a question, Betty, just follow up on the comment that Martha made it as far as the, what the federal government will help with. And I just wanted to reiterate, at least as, as an airport director, I don't think I've seen any, anything where they pay for operating expenses. I think they'll, they'll help cover some of the capital costs. There does take a while for that to occur. And I just kind of reiterate that.
Yeah, and that's been my personal experience as well, when we had a hurricane that resulted in a flooding event where the airport that I was managing was submerged for almost a week in, in waist-deep water. We had some damage. And it took about a year to get reimbursement from FEMA. And on some things, they would only reimburse to the condition that the pavement was in prior to the event. So if we had cracked pavement and the flooding widened the cracks, they said, well, will we pay to repair half the crack? And, and you can't repair half a crack. And so there's some challenges with the, with if you're gonna get federal funding and it is not timely in, in getting it, but it is a funding source and, and capital repairs after an event. My, my concern would be is that the sheer size of this event, if it's a full rupture along all seven hundred miles of the Cascade subduction zone. And it goes from the, from the fault line over to the Cascades, that's a hundred miles wide, seven hundred miles long. Ten million people in that zone that we are gonna overwhelm the, the, the ability of federal government to, to be able to, to assist. I know there'll be assistance, but it just when you're talking about an event of that size, my concern is that, is there going to be sufficient federal resources to be able to assist everyone who is, is impacted by that? So. Okay, I feel like I'm, I'm just, just giving you all doom and gloom, but so earlier I talked about, you know, we're having to slow maintenance and we're having to slow down how often we get out to airports. And I wanted to show you a couple of real world examples of what that means over this past summer. So with the, with the fewer staff members, we're, we're not able to get out to the airports as often as we would like. And generally pavement problems occur slowly. But once in a while, you'll have something like what we had, we experienced out of Prospect over the summer is we, we went out in September, we hadn't been out to that airport since May. So when we inspected in September, we found a sinkhole. It's about three feet wide, it's at the midpoint on the center line of the runway. And so we don't know when that occurred. It happened sometime between when we inspected in May and when we inspected in September. And so that sinkhole won't even support the weight of our staff when they were out there. And it certainly won't support the weight of an aircraft, so we've got that runway closed. So this is an example of, of when we can't get boots on the ground or, you know, eyes on our facilities, if something happens unexpectedly, it may be a little while before we, we find out about it. We have four airports that are gravel runways. Alkali Lake, Oahu, Rome and Saniam Junction. And again, we don't get out to these as often as we would like. And yes, they're gravel runways, but if they have a rain event or some other erosion event, we might not know about it for a, a long period of time because we don't get out there, get out to those airports very often. We have three airports that have turf runways. And again, we can't get out and mow as frequently as we would like. And so either the, the grass gets higher than we would like, or in the ca, in some cases like Tokidi, we have a, a pilot association, a group of, of friends of that airport that have taken it upon themselves to, to go out and mow it for us. And so we have other airports where we have groups, pilot groups or friends of an airport that are assisting us in, in doing some of this basic maintenance, simply because we don't have sufficient staffing to, to be able to do it.
Hey Betty. We've been aggressively in asking for help versus waiting for people to offer their help. Volunteers, if there's volunteers out there and there's airports that we can't get to, we should build, we should actively go out and ask for volunteers to help give information at each one of these airports that you can't get to as often as you want.
Yeah, we've talked to OPA about it, to the ninety-nines, to EAA. You know, we've got some established, well-established groups of friends like out at Friends of Pacific City, which is a great group that, that helps us with that airport. We'd certainly like to see more of our airports adopted by pilot communities to help us with it. And so we've had some conversations, we could probably be more aggressive with talking and asking, asking for help, especially at our recreational airports.
Okay, but at least you're asking, so that's great.
Yeah. Okay, so just a couple of other slides, just to show you what does it look like when we can't, when we slow the maintenance down or we defer maintenance. We start getting, in, in older pavements, we start seeing vegetation growing through the cracks along the sides. And, and vegetation in, growing in the pavement just accelerates the deterioration of that pavement even further. Another issue, I know I'm preaching to the choir here, but the trees growing up in the approaches to our airports. For the ones that are eligible for federal funding, we try to get some federal funds to help us tackle it. But for the airports that are not eligible for, for funding, like Cascade Locks and several others, we have trees growing up and we've got to, we paused doing a, trying to do any type of tree removal on, on those airports. And, and Oregon trees grow like weeds. And, and tree trimming and tree removal just seems to be a constant task for us. We've deferred some other projects like over at Toledo, that ramp is has completely failed and needs a replacement. We're doing some design work on it now, we'll be coming back to the board to ask for permission to spend some funds on repair of it. But for right now, that was one of the pop projects that we've have paused. Okay, the other things that we had to eliminate with the loss of staffing is our education and outreach program. We had an annual publication called Flight Lines, we've suspended doing that. Most of my counterparts in other states do a monthly newsletter, we don't do that. We have almost no social media presence. We were participating in education and outreach programs and air shows like over at Madras and the Hillsboro, McMinville, the Oregon International Air Show, we, we've suspended participation in those. We had a little bit of money left over in some Business Oregon funding to, for the UASs that, and we've just spent the last of that going to the AUVSI Exponential Trade Show. And that participation is also going to have to end because we no longer have funding for it. Okay, so.
At least, we've, you know, you painted a pretty dire picture here, especially with, you know, Prospect being closing and stuff. I'm a little interested in your thoughts. You know, right now, we have core funding that's down to funding economic impact. I mean, that's tier three if things that are being funded by Core, while you're closing runways. Why can't we approach a legislator to tweak the core funding? And that's wrong. When we're, we shouldn't be funding economic opportunities at various airports while you're closing state airports. Are we gonna pursue any kind of rewrite of the core?
We can certainly discuss it. Right now, remember, the, the fuel tax revenue was split fifty percent to Core, twenty-five percent each to SOAR for the state-owned airports and twenty-five percent to ROR. We've shut down the ROR program and moved those funds over into Core. So now it's seventy-five percent to Core, twenty-five percent to SOAR, which funds, you know, for repairs at the state-owned airports. And prior to the pandemic, the fuel tax was generating about four million a year. So it was going two million to Core, one to each to SOAR and ROR. So now if we get back to pre-pandemic level, a four million a year, that three million of that would go to, to Core, a million to, just to SOAR. A million a year is not adequate for the, the twenty-eight state-owned airports, especially when we have three runways that are at end of life. So that's a good point and it's certainly something we could discuss with the legislature.
Is we have the ability to, at least some ability to solve our own problem. On having one state pro, grant program funding economic initiatives while we have another state grant closing airports. We need to look internal to ODA, that's a simple, that's a simple solution. I would ask that you probably take a look at other areas. I mean, it's, it makes no sense to fund economic initiatives while we're closing airports. No, no sense at all.
Okay, we, we, we can look at, at options for that. And one, one easy, relatively easy fix might be to allow state-owned airports to apply for Core. Cause right now we limit them only to applying for SOAR. So that might be, the quickest, easiest fix that doesn't require a legislative fix is allow state-owned airports to apply for, for, for Core grants. Okay, then no other questions? Okay, so again, this, this is just a recap of where where we're at today in terms of the fuel tax revenues. So just what are the, the total amount? So again, ninety-seven percent of the fuel in Oregon is sold as jet fuel, so I'm just using the numbers for jet fuel. In twenty-one, there was a hundred and thirty-three million gallons sold in twenty, a hundred and seventy-two in, in nineteen, two hundred and, almost two hundred and twelve. So it's down by about thirty-seven percent from where it was in nineteen. But we're starting to see some signs of recovery, just looking at the month of August for the past three years. So for twenty-one, about eighteen and a half million gallons, twenty was eleven-six, nineteen was almost nineteen million, and then in eighteen, there was, it was at twenty-two. So we're starting to see some improvement over this time last year. We're about even with where we were in twenty nineteen, still well below what we were in twenty twenty. So the big question for me is the August numbers, is that sustainable? Or was that a seasonal related to the firefight, the fire activities? Because August saw quite a bit of fire suppression activities and all of those aircraft use jet fuel. So my question is whether or not that is a seasonal influence be, related to fire suppression activities? Or are we truly starting to, to, to get back to the pre-pandemic levels? We will know more in the next coming couple of months. Fire season is winding down. And so we'll know, was this is this truly sustainable? Or was this just a, you know, a one-time hiccup related to the fires? So as I mentioned earlier, how did we what did we do to replace the revenues that were lost from the fuel tax drops? We transferred almost a million dollars out of the grant program cash reserves in nineteen twenty-one and twenty-one, twenty-three, we'll be transferring seven hundred thousand over. And then we got a little bit of federal assistance in nineteen twenty-one, under the CARES Act, we got four hundred and twenty-five thousand. And then in this budget cycle, we'll be getting about six hundred and thirty-three thousand from Chrisa and ARPA that we will use for, to help cover our operating expenses. Okay, so what happens if the, the fuel tax revenues aren't sustained at the level that, or improving where they're at right now? If God forbid, the, the revenues drop even further than they are right now, what is our backup plan? First, we ask for state general funding to supplement for our operating budget. If that is unsuccessful, then we can look at increasing the percent that we pull out of the grant program for administrative cost. Right now, we are allowed by statute to take five percent. And pre-pandemic, that was about two hundred thousand a year. So if we had to, we can go in and ask the legislature to allow us to increase that to twenty-five percent, which at the pre-pandemic level, that would generate about a million a year. Or we can ask for, to be allowed to use our aircraft registration fees for operating costs. That's about three hundred thousand a year. Right now, we are using those funds to pay matching share on our federal grants. We could look at pausing the grant program for one or two years. We could look at pause, continuing to pause on the repairs on the state-owned airports. And we could also look at pausing all federally funded projects if they have a matching share. So again, on the federally funded projects, it's a ten percent local match usually. This year and last year, we were fortunate enough that it was a hundred percent federal without a requirement for a local match. Starting for the federal fiscal year that just started, the beginning of this month, there is the match requirement, so a ten percent match. And we assume that in future years, that there still will be the ten percent match requirement. And we assume that in future years that there still will be the ten percent match requirement. So another option, if if we had to, that we would pause all projects that had that required a match. So again, the assumption is that we will not get any additional federal assistance on operating costs. There's federal assistance for capital projects, that's the ninety percent federal, ten percent local. But in terms of any additional money for to cover our operating expenses, we are assuming that there will be no more of that. So again, this is worst case. None of this are things that we want to do. Other than asking for general funds for our operating budget, the remaining things we would prefer not to have to do. But that's the contingency plan. If we're unable to get general funds. Any questions on this slide? Okay. So I think the last slide on this deck is what is some of our goals and strategies for recovering? From the pandemic, again, trying to find an alternate funding source that is stable and adequate. Build our operating cash reserve to six months of expenses. At the beginning of this presentation, I told you our goal eighteen months ago was just to be able to keep us at. At the five hundred thousand, you know, our operating expenses are about two hundred thousand a month. And I would like to get us to where we have at least six months of operating cash reserve. Which would be the one point two million. Then our goal says no further staffing cuts. Restore the three positions that that we cut. And then if funding is available, we would like to try to get this building. Ideally, we'd like to replace the building we're in. It's sixty-six years old. But if we're not able to do that, at least do some retrofitting to it to the life safety standard. So that it will stand long enough for the occupants of the building to get out. During or following a major seismic event. We would like to restore the pavement preservation funding program, which was cut almost in half during this. During our current budget, we would really like to try to save the runways at Prospect, Oak Ridge and Cape Blanco. And if funding was available, we'd like to add four additional staff positions. One to for Aurora to manage that airport, a property manager to to handle the two hundred and seventy leases that we have. An additional maintenance person and someone in the. UAS and resiliency preparation. Those are our wish list items if we had had funding. So are there any questions from board members on this, Martha?
You know, those are the things that you absolutely need to have, especially, you know, the upgrade to the office. Very concerned about. The background on this Mitch has tried this, you know, every which ways the Sundays before you got here, you've kept up the battle. At one point, there was some thought about probably. Getting a new office or upgrade to the office by ODA self. Was just seeming to be bleak, like it was just never going to happen. So there was a discussion about could we get with Salem? To talk about some kind of centralized project. Where, you know, Salem could share some money, ODA could share some or money or the state could share some money. With the intent that you're building something that is earthquake sustainable. That could operate as a control center during, you know, recovery ops. But something that I I do believe that probably the initiative, the ODA on its own, getting its own building rebuilt. Is going to be a tough sell. As such, a little bit of creativity is probably going to have to be called for and even then I'm not for sure if it's going to be successful, but. I think some creativity on maybe engaging with Salem on what, because I'm sure Salem's pushing to get their stuff, you know. Earthquake modified as well. Have we done anything with talking to them about doing a co initiative at all?
Yes, we actually we have. When we when I first got here and started having that discussion about a potential replacement for this building. Salem was very interested in co locating with us in a building. Either on this on the site that we're on or or over at the terminal, they're facing the same issues that we are. The bill the building is about the same age. As our office, it doesn't, it hasn't been sized with clay. Retrofitted same issue. So we were talking, having that conversation about a joint building with the airport management. When the price tag came in. It was, let's say, ten to twelve million. And we simply didn't have the revenues to be able to support that that level of debt, even if we were leasing space out to to Salem. And so we kind of put that one on the back burner. It may be time to.
Did you try selling it at all as an operational control center during, you know, you know?
All right, that was that was part of what drove the price tag up is I asked for what the price would be for a building. That would have would meet, there's different standards of of of. Resiliency, one is life safety, which means it stands long enough for you to get out of the building before it collapses. And then another is immediate occupancy, which means it not only stands, you're able to occupy and use the space after the event. And that's and I asked for an immediate occupancy building. With the understanding that this would become a mini EOC for the recovery efforts. And that's what drove the price tag up so high is to build a building that will stand and stay functional after. An M eight or or nine event just really drove the price up. So it's probably time to revisit it again. The issue of of the debt. DAS will front end finance the building and then we repay it over a period of time, twenty years or so. But even at that. The debt service was just beyond our ability to be able to afford.
Way you're going to get it funded is getting resiliency funds. I don't think you're ever going to fund it. If you if you try to get it through normal DAS funding, it'll never happen. So. Have to wedge it in to some special purpose. All out fund some something would be my guess.
And then I think, you know, the last eighteen months, we've been focusing so much on. Pandemic response and surviving the the drop in revenues and and all the challenges that the pandemic has has has. Created for us, but now it's time for us to start thinking about again about. That sleeping giant that's sitting off of our coast and we we know it's going to happen at some point, possibly within our lifetimes. That we need to start paying attention to that one again. And and part of that is getting a building that. Ideally would be functional after the event, but at a minimum gives us the opportunity, gives the staff a fighting chance to to survive. When the building falls. Okay, so. Good questions. We are now at eleven twenty. Shall we move on into the next topic or do you want to take a five minute break?
Any questions from anybody, John, you know, Tom, Hilda, anybody out there got any questions about, you know, funding and ways ahead?
Okay, no questions.
You know, I I think that obviously there there are huge challenges for us. At the department, it's a. I mean, to me, it does seem overwhelming sometimes when you look at it. I I mean, I'm up against similar challenges of always operating in deficit. And I know Betty cannot operate in the deficit, so that makes it a super challenge. Being able to do that. I don't really have anything else to add other than that, I just. Thankful for all the efforts that Betty's putting through and and just and just the comments that you've made, Martha, just to try to help. Move the needle forward a little bit and move this progress a little bit forward.
Yeah, thanks. I mean, it's just when you don't have any revenue, it's hard to do to your job. Tom?
Is there is there any way that we could accelerate the repair of the runway at Prospect? At all?
Well, we're going to fix the the sinkhole. Yeah, we'll fix that and and get that get it reopened, but that runway is at at the end at the end of its life. It needs to have. At a minimum, a mill and replace of the surface course. We are going to apply for Connect Oregon money for that. The price tag I want to say is two and a half million, two and a half or three million to replace the runway there. So, you know, we're attempting to. I don't know if if it'll be successful because there's only forty-six million total available for Connect Oregon and. Three different modes. Rail, marine and aviation are all going to be competing for that forty-six million. And so there's going to be a lot of competition. And so that's that's, you know, our short term strategy is. We'll try for Connect Oregon money. We do not have two and a half million to be able to put into that one. Cape Blanco is not far behind. And in a little bit, I'm going to tell you why Cape Blanco is such. So much interest to us in terms of survivability after. An earthquake along Oregon's coast. It's going to be one of the few airports that we expect is going to. Stay out of the tsunami inundation zone. It's going to be one of the few functioning airports left on Oregon's coast, so we have some interest in. In that airport as well, but the the short term fix, yeah, we'll fix the pothole. And get that runway reopened, but really that runway and Oak Ridge is the same way. That runway needs a replacement as well. And and Aurora is not too far behind Aurora's runway. The there's a three inch overlay on top of the existing runway and that overlay is now seventeen years old. And it has an average life of twenty. It's showing its age and it's telling us very clearly that it is nearing end of life. And it needs a replacement. Now in that. And for that airport, we're fortunate enough that we can get federal funding and only have to do ten percent of the total project cost, but for. Prospect, Oak Ridge and Cape Blanco, there is no federal funding. It's all got to be state.
Yeah, with with Aurora. In discussion just at the moment. If that airport were to have that extra thousand feet of runway, most of the operators there would be able to tanker their fuel out and back in. This this is pretty much how corporate jets operate now. They like to. Keep all their fuel purchases at home as much as possible and that we would see a a pretty good increase in in fuel purchased right there at Aurora.
Sure, sure.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we're. Chairmaker, we are approaching eleven thirty. Do you want to take a short break and come back or do you want to take a lunch break now and then come back and? And hit resiliency and. And Aurora after lunch, what what's your preference?
Does anybody need a break? I mean, I I so you just, I would just like to continue on, but if you need a break, raise your hand. No hands raised, let's press.
Okay, if you'll give me just a moment to switch to a different presentation. Take me just a moment. Okay. Your screen. Andrea?
Yeah, can you come help me?
So what am I doing wrong? Skip share, okay, so I I go. Screen share.
Betty, we couldn't see your screen a second ago.
You could?
Yeah, no, I can't.
You don't have your slideshow up quite yet. You've just got your. Extra one here.
So what am I doing wrong?
Go ahead and X out and close that screen down. Just X out there. And then you want to open the slideshow right here, so from beginning.
Okay.
I'll go ahead and click it again.
Okay, now, no, no, there we go. All right. Okay, so do you see something that says part two?
Yes.
Okay, so if part one wasn't depressing enough, part two is really gonna depress you. So now I'm going to talk about resiliency and airports role and response. And then some legislative concepts and then we're going to finish out today talking about Aurora. So. I would spend most of the resiliency talking about earthquakes, but I just did want to mention briefly to you. About airports roles and wildfire suppression and support. And the issue that we found this summer with availability of of jet fuel. So you may have heard that over the summer, like so many things that that we're experiencing now with a. Driver shortage. The product is out there. There's plenty of aviation fuel. The issue has over the summer was getting that fuel. To the airports and it's a lack of sufficient drivers and not only is it just truck drivers. Those drivers have to have a specific type of endorsement called a hazardous materials endorsement in order to. Transport fuel. And so it's been an issue all summer long about getting sufficient. Drivers and getting fuel to the airports. It was exacerbated at the airports that were supporting. Wildfire suppression activities. So. And there was a handful of airports in Oregon in particular that were hard hit. By this because they were supporting wildfire suppression. So most aircraft that do wildfire suppression. Use use Jet A. As a couple of days ago, there was still fifteen fires burning. Eight hundred thousand acres have been burned this summer. Of the ninety-seven public use airports in Oregon, only thirty-four of them have a jet fuel capability. And that fuel storage in Oregon, excluding Port of Portland. All of Oregon's, the thirty-four airports. Only have a total capacity of about eight hundred and fifty-four thousand gallons and it's distributed among fifteen airports. In eastern Oregon and Columbia Gorge, twelve in the valley, six on the coast. And so what we were finding is small airports. And I use Lakeview as an example because two of the biggest fires this summer was the Bootleg Fire and the Cougar Peak Fire. And both of those fires were were being supported by. The Lakeview Airport with aircraft using that, the Lakeview Airport for their base and for where they were getting their fuel. Now, when they couldn't get fuel at at Lakeview, Clima Falls helped out. And we had fires elsewhere in the state, like over at La Grande, had to borrow some fuel from Pendleton. It was just. Borrowing and begging for fuel this summer of trying to get fuel out to airports, even as far as Tillamook was having to try to. Was running out of fuel related to fire suppression, so. We don't think this is going to be any better next summer because, again, there's sufficient product. It is just a matter of getting that to the airports. And then once you get to the airport, does that airport have sufficient? Storage for the amount of usage, the peak usage that that comes along with fighting fires. So again, using Lakeview as an example, they only have eight thousand gallons of storage. And over the summer, they would go through that. You know, within a few days and then it order more fuel as soon as they got some, they'd order more fuel, but right now. It's two to three weeks. From the time you order the fuel to time when you can get it. And so we're expecting that that's going to continue into next summer as well. And the solution is to add storage at at some key airports throughout the state. We've identified twenty of them, ten in eastern Oregon, four on the coast, six in the valley. Add an additional storage capacity there of twelve to fifteen thousand gallon tanks. To do that needs about four million dollars. And so we are shopping around the legislator legislature to see if there's any legislator that would willing to be willing to. Take this on as a as a project and try to get us funded. take this on as a, as a project and try to get us funding for it. And because this, this problem we anticipate will persist at least for next summer, if not longer. Uh, and as wildfires, uh, and extended wildfire season seems to be becoming the norm for Oregon. We just need to address, uh, additional fuel storage, uh, capabilities for, for Oregon's airports. So is there, Martha, did you have a question?
Yeah, I'm assuming we would target, there's a federal initiative underway to get more funding for wildfire support, uh, ranging from more, more funding for prescribed burning to more funding to hire firefighters. I'm, I'm supposing we're targeting that funds. Is that true?
Yes, we're going to look at every possible funding source. We're going to look at state funding, federal funding. There's, um, we, we're hoping that, uh, at the state level, ODO, the Oregon Department of Energy, uh, just got fifty million dollars to invest in, uh, sustainable, uh, um, fuel projects. We tried unsuccessfully to convince them that fuel storage, um, should be, uh, uh, an eligible item in it. We weren't successful, but what they said they could possibly fund is, um, uh, solar panels and solar generation to power that, um, uh, the fuel systems in the event of a power failure. That's the type of thing that they could fund. And now, now we're shopping to see within other state, um, programs, is there uh, some, um, some funding mechanism. The, the problem is the price tag on these are two hundred thousand with installation. They can be about two fifty. Uh, and so they're, 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 they're fairly expensive items. But yeah, we're pursuing every funding opportunity we can, we can find, whether state or federal.
And you've talked with ODF because I'm supposing that ODF firefighting is using some of those, um, airports?
Uh, yes, or they're, they, or their contractors are.
Okay.
Yes. So. So this isn't a, a quick fix. I just wanted to bring it to the board's attention that this was an issue that popped up over the summer. And we anticipate it's going to be recurring during firefighting seasons for the next, at least for, for next summer as well. So the other topic I wanted to talk to you about this morning is, is related to, to, um, resiliency and earthquakes. So, um, for, for many of you, this will probably, uh, just be a refresher. But for some of you, if you are like me, um, and new to Oregon, uh, this has been a pretty steep learning curve for me. Two years ago, I had never heard of Cascadia Subduction Zone. And I had no idea what liquefaction was. So it, I've learned a lot in the past couple of years. And, and what I've learned, um, uh, kind of concerns me a little, um, actually concerns me a lot. Uh, and I wanted to share with you, you know, some results from a three-year study that was just concluded earlier this summer, that the Department of Homeland Security, FEMA, uh, uh, Oregon Office of Emergency Management, and the Governor's Office were all a part of, uh, this study, and ODA was, was a part of the study as well, that looked at transportation, uh, infrastructure, and what happens right after that magnitude nine, eight or nine earthquake. And so one of the key findings out of that report is what you see on the screen in front of you. It says, "Airports and airfields in Oregon are critical to early disaster response efforts, serving as a staging and distribution points for an, and, for an anticipated national influx of critical supplies and resources into the region. However, significant planning and analysis are necessary to better understand and enhance the resiliency of these facilities in order to more efficiently and effectively support incident response." So just as a reminder for those of you, um, uh, not familiar with it, or, or those that are. So the Cascadia Subduction Zone is a seven-to-a-hundred-mile fault line that lies off of Oregon's coast. Partial or full ruptures occur on average of every two-hundred-and-fifty years. It's been, uh, three-hundred-and-twenty-one years now since the last one. When there's a partial or full rupture, it produces a magnitude eight or a nine earthquake. And depending on if it is partial or full rupture, uh, it will result in shaking of three to five minutes, followed by weeks and months of aftershocks during the event. Or, uh, western, the western third of Oregon will be subject to liquefaction. Again, that is taking soil and turning it into chocolate pudding, uh, subsidence, which means the ground will drop. Permanent ground deformation, which means the ground will, will wave, will deform, will turn sideways. And then if that's not enough, along the coast, uh, a magnitude eight or nine, uh, earthquake will generate a tsunami of up to a hundred feet in height. So as, um, Allison Perch is a geotech engineer who has done the Scappus, Newport, Grants Pass, resiliency studies, as well as participating in the Hillsborough, uh, uh, master plan and the resiliency section. And as she has put it, we are nine and a half months pregnant. So it can occur at any point now. And so the question is, is the coast toast? Well, yes, um, but there are sixteen airports, public use airports along the coast. And of those, six are outside the tsunami inundation zone. Um, and you can see which six those are on this screen. And so some of Oregon's, uh, the coastal airports, many of them are not expected to survive, but a few of them will. And once the, um, the, the tsunami, uh, event has, uh, ended, those remaining airports are going to need assistance in uh, recovering and, uh, fulfilling their, uh, needed role in, in, uh, providing support to their affected communities. So Oregon's coastal population is roughly a hundred thousand. In the summertime, that can, that can be as many as two hundred thousand. The, the different commissions and agencies that have studied, uh, uh, what, what to expect after a magnitude eight or nine earthquake are estimating that it will take one to three years, depending on the location, on the coast, to restore access, road access to the airports. Excuse me, to the communities. Uh, the, there are six coastal ports along, uh, Oregon's coast. And, um, there was not an estimate that I could find of how long it would take to repair and restore those. All six of those ports are within the tsunami inundation zone. So initially, immediately following the event, roadway access will be, will be cut off. And the only way to get into, uh, these communities that are isolated or islanded is going to be by air. And again, the population, the permanent population along the coast is a hundred thousand. Uh, in the summer with tourists, it can be up to two hundred thousand. And any survivors of the tsunami are going to need to be airlifted out because without drinkable water, electricity, fuel, fuel, or food, those survivors, uh, will need to be brought out, uh, of the coast. And that is going to be by air. So the Oregon Seismic Safety Policy Advisory Commission and the Cybersecurity and Infrastructure Security Agency has estimated, how long will it take to repair, uh, critical infrastructure uh, following a magnitude eight or nine earthquake? On the coast, electricity, three to six months, water and sewer, one to three years. Highways, including Highway one oh one, two-plus years. Healthcare facilities, three years. Here in the valley, uh, no electricity for up to three months. Water and sewer can take anywhere from a month to a year to restore. Major highways, including I-five, six to twelve months. Police and fire stations, two to four months, and healthcare eighteen months. Of the, in the, uh, in the valley and the coast, seventy-six percent of the bridges will be damaged. Forty percent of those will have significant damage, and thirty-three percent of those are over water. Sixty-four hundred miles of highway are at risk for landslide. Sixteen thousand miles of roads will experience permanent ground deformation. And then if that's not enough of a challenge to do the repairs, you need five things. You need to have people to do it, your labor. You need to have the appropriate equipment, materials, fuel, and you have to be able to get to the, the work site. So the challenges, in addition to having no electricity, water, sewer, fuel, the first challenge is, is access, getting employees, um, that are able to come to work. First, they've got to be able to get to work. And if I were to ask any of you, are you within walking distance of where you work? My, my guess is that you're going to say no. Um, I live five miles from my work site. I could, in theory, walk. But that's going to take the better part, uh, uh, of a day. So being able to get to your work site, first, are you able to work? Have, is your home environment secured enough to where you can meet your, you and your family's basic needs so that you can come to work? Do you have the appropriate equipment that is undamaged to be able to do the repair work? Do we have the materials to do the repair, either onsite that wasn't damaged? And you have access to it, or do you have to bring those materials in from somewhere east of the, the, of the Cascades? How are you going to get to the work? Again, remember, there's sixteen thousand miles of roads that are going to have permanent deformation. We're going to have bridges down. We're just going to have a lot of challenges to overcome just to get to wherever the work site is at. And then the Achilles heel is none of the repairs are going to be possible without fuel. Um, if you think construction equipment and what it takes to clear and repair a road, most of that equipment needs fuel. And Oregon's Achilles heel is that ninety percent of Oregon's petroleum fuel storage is at a single location in Portland that sits on the banks of the Willamette River. It stores less than a week's worth of fuel. It sits on soils that are expected to liquefy, which means, uh, the soil turns into chocolate pudding. The tanks that you see here in the picture, they slide into the river. And the ones that don't slide catch fire as the other ones are sliding into the river. So, um, again, ninety percent of Oregon's petroleum fuel is stored in this single facility. So without fuel, to operate the equipment without fuel for you to be able to drive your car to your work site without roads to be able to get from your home to your work site, then it becomes really difficult to be able to, to begin these repairs. So the moral of this story is, at least for the first few weeks and months, until the roads can be cleaned and repaired, the only way we're going to be able to get resources into affected communities is by air. And when I have, uh, discussed this with, with some others that are involved in emergency preparedness or response, and their response is, well, we'll just helicopter everything in. Well, only five percent of, uh, the aviation fleet in the US is helicopters, is, is rotor wings. Ninety-five percent are fixed wings, and the fixed wings require a runway. So, as, uh, Oregon Military Department, Dave Stuckey, who's the director over there, has said, you know, the first four days, you're pulling people out, and the next four to six months, you're trying to put people in. And so, uh, again, uh, the airports will serve as a lifeline to these isolated communities until the roads can be complete, cleaned, and repaired. So, and again, the size that we're looking at, Oregon's population is four million. Two-thirds of them live in the western third of the state. Hundred thousand live along the coast, plus visitors, make it, uh, can be up to two hundred thousand. If it's a full rupture along the Cascadia Subduction Zone, we're talking seven hundred miles long, a hundred miles wide, population ten million people. So, uh, it is, I cannot say this enough, Oregon's airports and Washington's airports and Northern California's airports are all going to be the lifeline for, uh, getting resources into communities until the roads can be restored. So, um, there is an awful lot of work still to be done. There's been a lot of studying, work done so far. There's still a long ways to go. And one of the, the next step at following this three-year study that, um, uh, DHS and FEMA and, and OEM had done is it looked at the twelve, uh, airports in Oregon, uh, that are expected to serve as staging areas. Um, and so we want to do a follow-on study, uh, to look at all ninety-seven public use airports. Uh, and what role each of those airports might play, not just the twelve staging airports. Because I promise you, if Corvallis has a working runway and that community is isolated because I-five and all the other roads are damaged and you can't get in via surface transportation, the airport is going to play a role in the response. And so will, you know, uh, Crestwell and Cottage Grove and, uh, every other airport uh, is going to play, if it's got a working runway, it's going to play a role in the response. So we'd like to do a study of looking at what are their capabilities? What do they need, given what we think that they will be asked to do immediately following the event? What is the cost of the things that they need? Uh, and then, uh, figure out an implementation and a, a financing strategy for those. And then, uh, finally, a, uh, an operational tool for, um, uh, decision-makers outside the affected area, um, that is in easy-to-understand terms. So if somebody out in Montana or Colorado wants to know, can you, which airports can you land a C-one-thirty at? That they can look at this tool and say, okay, there's twelve runways in Oregon where you can land a C-one-thirty. Don't try to take a C-one-thirty into, oh, let's say, you, you can't take a C-one-thirty into Aurora. The runway's not wide enough. And so we want a, a, an easy-to-understand operational tool for the rest of the country to be able to use as they're planning on bringing supplies and support into, into Oregon. Okay, I'm not seeing any questions. Okay, so again, I mentioned that twelve airports are designated as staging and FEMA support, um, bases for the government-led effort. And we think there'll be a significant government-led effort, but there will also be a civilian response as well. Corporate America is going to want to come in to assess their facilities and to assist their employees. Faith-based groups, Good Samaritan groups, affiliation groups such as, uh, Aircraft Owners and Pilots Association. We think that there will be some response from all of those groups as well. And they will want to, to, um, come in to, uh, uh, provide assistance as well. And not just to the twelve staging airports, but to airports all, uh, any operational airport, uh, west of the Cascades. And east of the Cascades, uh, in central Oregon is going to have an incredibly important mission, especially the airports uh, around Redmond Bend, um, Madras-Prinville, Clamath Falls. All of those are going to, to play roles, especially in staging and, and, um, FEMA support roles. So, uh, the moral of the story here is if you got a working runway, uh, west of the Cascades, it's probably going to get used, uh, in this event. And I'm not seeing any questions. Okay. So the last thing on earthquake preparation that I wanted to talk to you about is, uh, you know, planning and preparation is, is really key to survivability after the event. So next summer, in, in June, mid-June, there will be a four-day full-scale exercise involving twenty-five thousand people from three states, Oregon, Washington, and Idaho, are going to be participating as well as our counterparts in, uh, federal agencies, um, in, in Washington DC. Uh, it is, again, it's a full-scale exercise. Um, the scenario is starting four days after a magnitude-nine event. And it is testing operational coordination, infrastructure systems, which includes, um, transportation and utilities, and then mass care services. Department of Aviation is going to participate in it, and we are encouraging airport managers, every airport manager in Oregon, uh, to contact their, their county, uh, or, uh, emergency management and, and participate in this. And again, we believe that airports will play a critical role in the response and the survivability of a community immediately following the event. Okay. We are coming up on almost twelve o'clock. So Martha, do you want, we'll stop there, take a lunch break, or do you want me to just keep plowing through?
Um, I just want to make sure we stay on, uh, so we take, right now, we're set for lunch break. Um, I just want to make sure we stay on. So we take, right now, we're set for lunch break at twelve fifteen. We just need to get through the totality of the resiliency and airport role. How much more do we have in that?
On resiliency, this is it.
Okay, so we're, we're, lunch break anyway, right?
Yep, we can, we can go ahead and take the lunch.
Okay, on the resiliency thing, we understand that, I think you, you talked a little bit about it at the beginning. I think many of the board members are very aware of the planning. I think what we need to get on to is there have been select airports that have been placed at the top of the list because they are in areas that will survive a tsunami. And they're also along communication routes that are already being strengthened by the department, by, by the state of Oregon. I.e. bridges have been, are in process of being strengthened. We need to get that top, we just need to get on to what are we gonna do for the top four or five airports and let's get on with it. We understand it's gonna be bad. This is, I, I can't tell you how many briefs I sent by to tell us how bad things are gonna be. Let's get past the briefing on how, but we all understand it's gonna be bad. Let's get on to the what we're gonna do. Let's start at the top of the airport. I mean, I think, I think Cape Blanco is, is the top airport that we need to put money into. Is that true?
Oh, for the coastal airports? Yes. Yeah.
We've identified the top ten airports that we want to focus on and it's been racked and stacked one through ten. Let's start and get those airports. I mean, what can we do for those airports that's already been identified as being the, the top, you know, players that we need to focus on?
Okay, so if you can see the slide that shows, says staging and FEMA mission airports, those are the twelve airports that have been identified by FEMA, DHS, OEM, you know, all the alphabet groups. These are the twelve. So along the coast, it's Astoria, Tillamook, Newport and Cape Blanco. In the valley, it's Hillsborough, Portland International, Aurora, Salem, Eugene and Medford. And then east of the Cascades, it is Redmond and Klammer Falls.
And we've done a real good job of getting in the east. The, the money has been spent on the east. Then I think everybody's now ready to move across the mountains and go to the west. My, my question is, money's been funneled into Redmond specifically for resiliency. Money has been funneled into the staging basis here on the east. When are we gonna start the funds, you know, getting money funneled in for resiliency operations? Specific resiliency money into the Cape Blancos and other west coast airports?
I, I, that's a good question. I don't know because we don't control that funding. Other than, you know, we have a little bit of money that we put towards the state-owned airports. But I know that Redmond, not Redmond, Medford is about to start tomorrow, starts their RRAP study that the other airports have already, have already been through. So a lot of this is FEMA-driven and OEM-driven as to, so far, they're, they're doing a lot of studying and not a lot of buying new equipment. Sorry?
What was the process Redmond used to get the millions of dollars they've gotten for resiliency? And whatever, whatever Redmond did, we need to follow that for the state airports such as Cape Blanco.
Okay. Well, one of the things we're gonna try to do with Cape Blanco, first, we're gonna try to get it eligible for federal funding so that we can start funneling, so the, the federal funds into upgrading that. We're also, Cape Blanco is one of the airports that we're gonna try to get some Connect Oregon money for to replace the runway, to add lighting and add, add a PAPI to it. So you have at least, you know, a little bit of a, of an approach, navigational aids. So baby steps, but we're, we're moving forward with that, especially, you know, in the case of Cape Blanco. Our interest is because the runway is a hundred and fifty feet wide, five thousand feet long.
We know, it's great. It's the number one airport we need to focus on building up. That's, I just want to get to, I understand that things are gonna be bad. Let's, I'd like a little bit more talk about the airports we're really gonna focus on and how we're gonna get money into those airports.
Okay.
A little bit more concrete on what we're gonna do to actually get those airports spun up and ready.
Okay.
Lot of work to be done. You guys are a big project.
Yes. And I think we have, we're starting to see interest among legislatures, at least the, the ones I have talked to that get it, especially with Cape Blanco, that that's gonna be one of the few that survives the tsunami. And, and it's the only one that can support an aircraft like a C-130, the military's cargo aircraft. It's the only one left on the coast. North Bend's the only other one that has a wide enough runway and it's got a twelve-foot elevation and it will be submerged. And so we're seeing some interest among legislators who get it. The, the need for, for that airport to be able to be used as a, as a lifeboat or as a lifeline. But we, you're right, we do have an awful lot of work ahead of us. And again, the past eighteen months, we focused so much on, on getting through this pandemic, but it's time for us now to start looking again at at resiliency and at the sleeping giant sitting off our coastline. All right, so it's almost twelve o'clock. So what's your preference?
I think, let's go with lunch and then we're set to come back at twelve forty-five, right?
Yes.
All right, so I think we just stay on schedule. So I guess we'll see you all at twelve forty-five.
Okay, thank you.
We're back in session.
Well, let's continue this working session. And if you could do us a favor, just do a quick roll call to make sure that we get everybody back.
All right, Chair Meeker.
Here.
Tom Barcelou.
Here.
Tom Kruger.
Here.
Hilda Pareo.
Here.
And then we've got two board members who are not in Tennessee, that's Vince Granato and Doug Ferguson.
Okay, all right. So I think we're gonna talk about some very exciting stuff on the legislative concepts, always fun to talk about. So Betty, I'm, I'm gonna hand it over to you for this one.
Yes, do you see a screen that says lunch?
I do.
Okay.
Aviation cowboy.
Yes, that was, Tony took that picture out of the Joseph Flyin'. I love this picture. Yeah. Okay, so I feel like I, I either bored or depressed most of our guests this, at the, the morning session. So for the afternoon session, I will try to do, you know, something a little bit more, more upbeat and uplifting and and talk about, we're gonna talk just for twenty minutes or so about legislative concepts. And then we're gonna get on to our favorite topic, which is the Aurora Airport. So for, this is a refresher, if, or, and for new board members, the legislature meets every year. Long session was twenty-twenty-one and, and, and twenty-two and even numbered years. It's a short session. It's a thirty-five-day session intended primarily to deal with issues that cannot wait until long session. And a lot of those are budget-related ones. Legislators are limited in the number of bills that they can introduce as well as, as committee limitations. This coming session will be the last session for Governor Brown as we will be electing a new governor about a year from now. And so the governor has some things, I think she was going to try to want it to push through in this last, in her final session. The, the process by which we get legislation in front of the legislature to consider starts with something called a legislative concept. And agencies are, submit them through our policy advisor and then they go through a series of, of hurdles they have to go through before they can get to a committee to be considered for, for inclusion in a bill. And the legislative concepts for the twenty-two session, which starts in February, are due in about a month from now. And right now, we're not looking at, at having anything for the twenty-two session. We are looking at some things for the twenty-three session, and that's what I'm gonna talk to you about today. And those are getting some permanent general funding, and a couple of, of, of technical corrections on moving some fees out of statute into administrative rule. There's a technical correction we need to do on sustainable aviation fuels. And then possibly trying to find some funding for a seismic refit of our office building. So first on, we talked earlier this morning about, you know, our dependency on the aviation fuel tax and, and the instability that that tax has been experiencing for the past eighteen months. So again, about two-thirds of our operating budget is funded by the fuel tax and a hundred percent of our grant programs are funded through the fuel tax. What we've experienced over the past eighteen months is, was a significant drop in revenue, starting in April of twenty-twenty. And then it's had a slow, mostly steady recovery since then. But as we talked about this morning, you know, there is the potential for a a catastrophic loss of revenue following a major seismic event with a long recovery time following that of three to five, three to four years. So the concept that we will try to push in the twenty-three session is to try to get permanent general funding. Most state agencies have some or all of their, their revenue is from general funding. We're one of the few that do not get either general or lottery funds. And so this is a, something we would like to, to pursue, is to see if, if we can, and not a huge amount, you know, a couple million a year out of, out of general funding to be able to give us a secure and stable funding source. And again, if we wait until after the seismic event to try to get general funding, we would be competing with an awful lot of other state agencies that have significant needs as well. And we would rather cross the bridge now while the bridge still exists. So any questions from any board members on this one? Again, we're not gonna try anything. The short session is coming up in February. It's thirty-five days of hectic work. And this is, it's too early to try to take this, to push this thing through, we think, in, in short session. Then a couple of just administrative things. We would like to get fees out of statute and move them into administrative rule. If they're in statute, that means to change them requires legislative action. And because if you're increasing them, that's considered a, a revenue increase or a tax increase, which requires a three-fifths vote of the legislature. And so we'd just like to get these two fees out of statute and put them into administrative rule. If you're wondering about the airport licensing, airports pay between thirty and a hundred and fifty dollars a year to us. It only generates about five thousand a year for the agency. And it has, to my knowledge, it has never been changed in at least twenty-five, thirty years. And so my question is, for five thousand dollars, is it worth even having it as a fee? And if we haven't changed the fee in twenty-five or thirty years, I don't want to attempt it through, through a legislative fix. I'd rather the board consider what would be an appropriate fee, if any, through administrative rule. And then, yeah, sorry, I don't know what happened there.
What does an airport get when we give them a license? I mean, what, what does it do for the airport?
For the big ones like Portland International, absolutely nothing. But for a lot of these airports, we go out and do the annual inspections on those airports.
Okay.
And so that, that, and plus we get a little bit of funding from federal funding to help cover the cost of doing the inspections. So really, that's all. And they get a piece of paper from us every year that says they're, they're, you know, they've got a license. So that's
Have you thought about just trying to somehow find out what those costs are when you do the inspections and the like, and then just divvying it up? Can you make, can you make the inspections, can you make the airport licensing pay for the inspections? Just make them self-sustaining?
We could. Again, when you're only paying thirty or fifty dollars for the smaller GA airports, the, the commercial service airports pay a hundred and fifty, but the smaller airports pay around fifty dollars. That's nowhere near the, the cost. So we could, but right now, the way it's set is in statute. So the legislature would have to, to change it. So again, get it out of statute and get it into administrative rule. And then the board can determine, you know, what that, what's an appropriate fee.
And, and this, John, you don't inspect one thirty-nine airports, right? That's the FAA's
That is correct. That is correct. We do not inspect the one thirty-nines. We do everybody else, but not the one thirty-nines.
Okay, but we still have to get a permit.
Yeah, you still gotta pay that, that fifty dollars or
That's fine. Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, I have no objection to that. So
Yeah.
Thanks.
But again, you know, it only generates about five thousand a year and we probably want to revisit, is it even worth asking airports to pay that, that fee or not? So, and the other technical correction that we would like to do, and again, there's no rush on this, but at some point, we need to clarify in statute that sustainable aviation fuels are subject to the aviation fuel tax. The other things we would like to attempt in the twenty-three session, we talked a little bit about this this morning, is the office building was built in nineteen fifty-five. It's a non-reinforced structure. It doesn't, it was built prior to any seismic code requirement. It will not withstand even a moderate earthquake. And if we, ideally, we'd like to replace the building, but if we're not able to do that, at least do some, excuse me, some retrofitting to make this, bring it up to life safety standards, so we can at least, the occupants can get out of the building in, in an earthquake. Okay, so we've had a request, we will respond to any legislative requests. So far, we've only had one for the twenty-two session. And that is Representative McLean, who has asked to assist ODA in the board with some airport planning best, best practices. We are looking at what our counterparts in our, the adjacent states are doing. Chair Meeker, Vice Chair Granato, and I have met a couple of times with Representative McLean and Rep. McLean co-chairs the Joint Transportation Committee, which is the committee that all of our bills are heard at. So in our most recent meeting with Rep. McLean, she indicated she was going to invite ODA to report to the Joint Transportation Committee at the legislative days in January about, not just about what our agency does, but what are some best practices that, that the department and the board can look at? And one of the things that came out of this discussion was back that our Airport Land Use Compatibility Guidebook, which the board adopted in two thousand and three, is a little bit outdated and probably needs, it needs a refresh. It needs to address some emerging issues that weren't around in two thousand and three, such as land use, compatible land use related to commercial warehousing that uses drones or unmanned aerial systems for delivery. That's probably something we would include in the update. And it's just, it's something that, it's, it's almost twenty years old and it, and we need to, to look at an update. And we're gonna see if Rep. McLean can find some funding to help with that. We're also gonna look at whether or not there might be some federal funding available for this. So, so for this, the short session coming up in February, we really, at this point, don't have a lot other than, you know, Rep. McLean's request. And, and right now, that's looking like that's all we're gonna do for short session. So any, do any board members have any comments or questions?
I could just have, I have one concerning, you know, Senator McLean, Representative McLean looking to help us out. If we could just go back and, you know, and, you know, reengage, it'd be nice if she could help give some impetus to our various counties out there helping us protect lands around our various airports. You know, there's, there's legislation already existing, talking about air, about various counties and other jurisdictions need to do that in their own comprehensive planning. But I believe that perhaps the energy for that has fallen away over the last decade. And it would be nice if, if she's looking to help, you know, for the larger system plan, making sure that those airport lands are protected in development. Would, that would be a nice thing for her to kind of help us out with.
Sure, sure. And that's something that we can also cover in, if we do that, an update to the Airport Land Use Compatibility Guidebook. We talk a little bit about in that. And so that would probably be an appropriate venue to talk about protection and incompatible land use around airports and wrap that all into that. And incompatible land use around airports and wrap that all into that, so.
All right, fantastic. Any, any, uh, any other questions?
No, I thought that was a great one. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we are a little bit ahead of schedule. I don't know if our panelists are on yet or if there is something else that the board would like to talk about. Until um, we have it on the schedule for one fifteen to start, start talking about Aurora. So if we want to wait, if there's anything from this morning's session that we want to to circle back on, or if there's any questions about. The legislative concepts or anything else that the board members would like to discuss.
Uh, open it up to the board out there or any staff member. Uh, Kathy, do you have, uh, who do you see that's on for our panelists?
Just bring up the list and check it twice.
Okay, so we need to give them a little bit to let them come on. Okay, uh, no big deal. Um. Kind of looking out there, it would be interesting who, on the um, building retrofit. Going back to trying to get to, you know, make your own luck per se, um. Who would you need to talk to on this, you know, the resiliency guys? Is that Mike up there, you know, to talk about, do they need? What do they look for in the ability of our legislators being able to fly into Salem to come back, you know, in an emergency like that? Are they looking to use Salem and, you know, how can we beat the drum to, you know? Kind of focus on beefing up, you know, some kind of emergency control center building for Salem. Um, just to enable our legislator for a continuity of operations.
Okay, well, um, Salem is really blessed in that um, several state agencies have. Um, have offices and EOCs in close proximity to the airport. The uh, the National Guard is located on the airport and the role of that guard is, uh, has a, a, a medical. Evacuation component to the mission of that particular one. Uh, OEM's offices are. Oh, within a couple of miles of of the airport. And an, an Office of Emergency Management is where the EOC, the Emergency Operations Centers is located at. For uh OEM, Oregon Military Department is also going to be a lead agency in the response immediately following. A seismic event, then their offices are nearby as well. ODOT has offices uh literally within a couple of miles of the airport as well. Um, so there's a lot of state agencies that have facilities in close proximity to the airport. On airport, there is none other than the guard uh and ODA. Um, and so, um. And and yes, you're correct. Mike Harriman is the governor's advisor on um, uh, resiliency. Uh, and he and I have had this conversation before and will continue to talk about the roles of airports. Uh, and what we needed to beef that up in terms of the ODA office building. Um, our initial conversations were with the Department of Administrative Services because they own all the state buildings. Um, with a couple of exceptions, ours being one of them. Um, and then they uh, they lease buildings for, for state agencies as well. Uh, and they're the ones that I will be talking to about updating and getting a price tag. If we just wanted to retrofit the existing building and not replace it, what the price tag of that would be. And then, um, if there is a way that we could, uh, if we finance it, we would finance it through DAS. Uh, originally, when we're talking about replacing the building and we were looking at a, like, I think it was ten or twelve million dollars for it. We were talking to DAS about a long-term loan that we would pay back over, you know, a twenty, thirty-year period. Uh, and DAS would own the building for that period of time and then, once it's paid off, we would own it. So I don't know what the price tag is gonna be, just to do a seismic retrofit to life safety standards. I would hope it's gonna be, you know, in maybe two or three million. Um, I don't know. Um, I've never retrofitted a building before, so I have no idea as to what the cost of this is gonna be. And if uh today's prices are. Uh, uh, if we wait a year, will prices be better? Um, the conversation I was having yesterday. Um, uh, was that fencing? Right now, we're doing two fencing projects and it's a hundred dollars a linear foot, which is twice what it was a year ago. So hopefully, prices will come down within the next few years and we can get into a, you know, into a range of, of where we can afford it.
In the meantime, um, let's say Cascadia happens tomorrow and you don't have a building. Uh, would you, what, would your desire, I would assume your desire would be stay on the airport and go and move in with the Air National Guard? I mean, that seems. That would be natural. Where would you want to go?
Where I want to go and where we could actually go are different things. Yes, it would make a lot of sense for us to go into the guard. The guard does not have room for us at present. Uh, and their mission is gonna be um, ramped up really quickly, immediately following the event. So where we would likely go um, is over to uh about a mile and a half from here into one of the ODOT facilities. That has some vacant space that we've already identified as one of two locations that we would relocate to in the event this building isn't occupiable. And then that, of course, assumes that they have power. Uh, uh, at communications and internet and uh, we have a way to get there. And if the roadway system doesn't work, um, then, you know, all of this is academic if we can't get people to the work site, you know? And working from home is fine and we love that, that so many of our employees are now skilled at remote working. But again, you have to have power and you have to have internet and phones to be able to to communicate. So I will tell you, the board, um, we are working on a backup plan. In the event that um, we lose power, electricity, communications for an extended period of time. And if this building is unoccupable and none of the, the um, the managers, the three managers and me. Survive to have another employee uh outside of the affected zone, take over. Um, uh, responsibility for the agency. So we're looking at some backup plans. Uh, in case that happens, how do we ensure the continuity of operations, uh, even on a limited scale? Um, and so, uh, this month, actually, September was National Disaster Preparation Month. And so, um, some of my time was spent on, on um. Preparing for a, a large-scale natural disaster. And then this month, on October twentieth, is the Great Oregon Shakeout. Which is an annual exercise that we participate in, uh, that you um, uh, practice. What happens during the event. Last year, we practiced, you know, the, how do you uh survive when the building is falling down around you? And then, uh, this year, I think we're going to practice, uh, how do you get home if you're here at work? Uh, when the event happens and uh, we all are fortunate in that we have here onsite, we've provided each employee with a get-home bag. Um, with basic, basic things they need to be able to walk home. Uh, and so we're gonna practice that this year. So it's just a, emergency response and specifically Cascadia. Has been on my mind a lot the last month or so, just because of that, and we're gearing up for Cascadia Rising twenty-two in June. So, um, I, I think I gave you kind of a, a long-winded answer to your question, Martha. I'm trying to stall and kill time until. Um, uh, one fifteen until we have, yes, Kathy?
Um, sorry to interrupt. Um, so I did email, uh, Tony Helbling. He was the one supposed to send the link to the other panelists. I was never provided their contact information. So I don't have it. Um, I see in the participants, I see a guest and a test. And a George VH, those are all three people I don't know and maybe some of them are panelists. I can't tell. Because they're not named. But none of the panelists um, on the list are on our participant list by name.
Okay, well, we may end up doing this at some other time. Uh, is Tony Helbling on? Cause the two, I mean, the, the two individuals, uh, the two groups. Uh, AAIA and Pam, uh, and then they had invited some of the actual businesses on there. Have we got a hold of Tony Helbin or Bruce Bennett?
I only have Tony um Helbling's contact and I emailed him to say the board was ready. Um, but he was the one supposed to get it out to everybody else, so I don't have that.
Okay.
If, if I may, this is Dave Wagner, and I'm sorry I didn't have my name correct at the beginning. Um, Tony should be joining us in just a moment if he's not on now.
Yay. There's one. Thank you for identifying yourself.
Yeah, I'm sorry for the misidentification.
There's that little rename thing, um, every once in a while, it's uh somebody else's uh name of their computer. There's Tony. And can guest identify him or herself, please? I don't know who that individual is. Okay, so we have Tony, we've got Dave, wait for Bruce, Robert, Rob, Ryan, and the other Bruce.
Yeah, sorry, I told those guys one fifteen.
No problem.
They're, they're all in.
So, um, we were having additional conversations while the board was, I was watching.
While we're waiting, can I ask a question about earlier discussion?
Sure.
Sure, I was just curious, um, what, Betty, I don't know if you've talked to anybody at the OEA? Or you said their offices weren't that far away from where yours are? I know you were looking at O, uh, ODOT going to some vacant offices there potentially.
There's Bruce.
Have, have you had any discussion with OEA about their offices and maybe switching offices so they can use yours?
I'm sorry, which agency, OEA?
Yeah, the Office of Emergency Management.
Oh, yeah, okay, OEM.
Sorry.
Uh, I have not had a special with OEM. We had it with, uh, we've looked at ODOT and DAS spaces, cause they are the closest in proximity to us. And they had vacant space available at the time that we were looking for temporary space. Should we be um, uh, remodeling or replacing this building or in the event this building um collapses? And where would we go? I have not talked to OEM. That's probably a good idea. My first thought is that. Both, uh, OEM would be great because we're gonna be at that table anyway. Um, I, I don't know if they have sufficient space for us, but that's a good idea and I can certainly talk to them about, you know, the possibility, you know, um. When this happens, uh, and, and we believe that Oregon's airports will be the lifeline. Thirty percent of Oregon's airport are, belong to Department of Aviation. So it's almost a third of the airports would be sitting at the table in the room with OEM. I think that has value.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, you know, maybe tongue-in-cheek a little bit, but, you know, maybe they could switch offices with you guys for a little while and figure out. Realize, you know, maybe there's a way we wanna correct. I, but I don't know what their offices look like, so I don't wanna say that too fast.
Much, much, much nicer than ours. I've been there, they're much nicer. But that might be a way to, to get some interest in funding, uh, a repair to this building.
There you go. And maybe.
But you know, it's a good idea because if anybody's gonna have, have power in Salem, it's gonna be OEM.
Right, exactly, exactly.
Yeah, and water and sewer and all those other things that we kind of need to.
Sure, maybe, maybe your go-bags just need to get you over to there.
Perhaps, yeah, yeah. Um, I have been mapping out how to get home, if I have to walk the five miles to get home. And how do you get there without crossing a bridge? Because the bridges may not be still there and I figured out a route. It's not pretty, but it. I, I could do it in a day or less, but.
All right, thank you.
Okay. All right, do we have everybody?
Madam Chair, so far I've got in the um, participants and if there's somebody else I don't recognize yet, please say so. Uh, Tony Helbling, Bruce Bennett and Dave Wagner are on. So, um, the other uh, panelists, uh, Robert. R O E D T, I don't know how to pronounce that. Uh, Rob Fornier, Ryan Johnson and Bruce Bergstrom are the other panelists. And are any of you on? Here we go, we yapped through the panelists. Madam Chair, I will leave this to you.
Okay, um, you know, Tony, Bruce, that you're, you're the two my, my primary players here, since you're kind of represent AAIA and, and Pam. So, uh, we just wanted to get together and talk a little bit about, you know, if you could help spread the information. Uh, to the tenants, you know, and the folks who actually live at the airport, a little bit of how we're doing. Um, I think, ODA is ready to talk about, you know, give you kind of a picture of operations. Things that's gonna be happening at the airport, which you'll need to kind of work around as we, you know, patch some pavement and the like. And then, um, with ODA's current manning issues, I just want to make you aware of, you know, exactly how much bandwidth they have. Yes, issues come up at the airport, uh, so you kind of know response times, what you can expect and those kind of things. And then a little bit about, just, you know, going back and making sure everybody, you know, back in two thousand and six, um, the Oregon Legislature. Passed, you know, a statue which set up the through-the-fence operations to begin with and. We, it's probably time for the Oregon Board to actually, you know, go back, take a look at those um entities. That are now are through-the-fence entities. Make sure that, uh, we have a, a path that keeps them solid and sustainable, um, for the, you know, for the next decade or through. Uh, so this is just basically really touching base with you all, getting your expectations uh matched. With ODAs and the board's capabilities, uh, and then looking forward. Making sure that we are doing due diligence to that Oregon State, uh, to that statue, and it's actually ORS eight thirty-six. Uh, on, you know, how they, they laid out through-the-fence operations and uh, continuing to make the best out of that ORS. Um, so let me turn it over to, to Tony and Bruce and anybody else who wants to, you know, just give some opening comments. And then I think we're gonna turn it over to ODA, uh, and talk a little bit about some expected projects sort of coming up. So you guys know when we're gonna have machines out there and the like.
So, Tony. Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Chair Meeker. Um, I'm assuming my microphone's on, everybody can hear me. Somebody wave, that'd be great. Good, okay. Um, Bruce is gonna have, add some points and Dave Wagner would also like to add some points. I'll go first. Um, I wanna uh, say I appreciate the opportunity, or we appreciate the opportunity to be invited to work with the board. Uh, to move things forward and look at the long-range future of the airport. Um, and we're especially interested because if you look at the entire airport footprint, approximately fifty-seven percent of that footprint is privately held property. Um, and we, I can't say that we represent every single airport owner, but we represent the vast majority of them. Um, where a real rural airport is defined in uh, ORS eight thirty-six. And it was Senate Bill six eighty that brought us, brought this kind of group together. Um, there was a long history of uh, several families at the airport, um, Bruce's being one of the primary. That been over backwards to work with the state since the airport's inception. And, I mean, it's a long history of working together and what we would like to do is really uh, stress the, the continued working together. Senate Bill six eighty kind of formalized it a little bit, but it, it was a longstanding tradition and I believe the board. Has a document that Chair Meeker put out that, uh, we helped add information to about those existing. Longstanding public-private partnerships that we would like to see continued. That's pretty much what I have input for this point. And I think there, we were gonna open discuss, I think, Chair Meeker, uh, possibilities of structures in the future after, uh, everybody else has a chance to chime, is that correct?
You bet, and uh, we'll go over a lot, just everybody on, you know, common understanding of, of where we are on funds and, and alike.
Sure.
Um, and we got, I think we got uh, almost an hour and a half. I don't know, sure, we need the hour and a half, but. Well, open to a lot of discussion to, you know, we want to hear really what you guys are thinking for the future, what you need for your business.
Sure.
And like.
We'll go into that.
With capacity.
Okay, uh, Bruce Bennett from Aurora Aircraft.
Bruce, are you there?
Find the right unmute button. Good morning.
Good morning, or good afternoon.
Yeah, already. Thank you very much. It is good to get together. It, it, the, the piece you did on the. On the airports in the state and the, and the current status and the finances of Aurora Airport was extremely helpful. I would like, I'd like to point out, just back to your opening remarks, um, of course, the. Of course, the current Oregon revised statute that deals with through-the-fences 2006, but the Aurora Airport since 1943 has been public-private. Of course, my family bought the property in 1968 and it's been pretty much seven days, well, yeah, other than holidays and occasional storm, seven days a week since 1968 on the field as an owner. And of course, the, the relationship has evolved over time. They called it an ingress egress where we paid Oregon Department of Aviation before they were called Oregon. Back when it was Oregon Aeronautics Division, but paid them every month and had an agreement. And so this is nothing new. I just want to make it clear that the 2006 is the date of the current documents, but it certainly doesn't reflect the history back to 43. Also, this is tiny, but the aerial photograph on the, is 2008. And as you, one look at it, a lot's changed just since then in building and development on private property, benefiting the neighbors and the citizens and the state. So that's it for me right now. Again, thank you for, thank you for putting this together. It's really good.
Thanks, Bruce. It is an amazing partnership. You, you take a look at the growth of the businesses around there and what you guys are doing. You know, I think the statute spelled out that, you know, they wanted Aurora to be an economic driver. Well, I think you're an economic driver, so congratulations on you all for just a long-term, you know, partnership. It's been fun to watch.
Well, and I'll chip in on what Bruce said about the relationship and the Senate bill. One of the things in the Senate bill was find creative ways that we could work together to develop economically, but also where public could work with private. Example of that is, is the sanitation systems on the airfield and, and what we've, what we've, what we've done to be able to bring jobs to the airfield. Also, Dave Wagner is with our group and he would like to share some information also.
You bet, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Person. Good afternoon, Board. How are you all today? I've kind of got two major things that I, that I'm looking at. One of them is what's going to happen with the continuation of flight training at the Aurora State Airport. I am one of the two flight schools on, on the airport here. And it is, seems very obvious to me that with the continued growth of population in the Salem-Portland area, that the continuation of flight training is going to be critically important on this airport. Because this airport, where it's located just outside of Portland's airspace and being managed by the state, not the Port of Portland, gives it a great opportunity to really start working towards supporting the airlines and supporting the commercial aviation industry by providing them the trained pilots that they need. So looking to the future of the pilot needs in this country, I think is very, very important. And this airport will play a critical role in it. So that's something that should always be looked at in, in the planning process. Another area that we look at very strongly is what's going to happen when Cascadia finally hits. We're fortunate here that due to the public-private partnership, we've been able to establish an emergency operations center with the Civil Air Patrol on our property out here. So when it does finally hit, all the Civil Air Patrol needs to do to open up their emergency operations center is simply walk in, turn on the light switches, and they're up and functioning to support the community. Now, part of that is going to be what will happen with the runway after the earthquake. And I believe the seismic studies has, have indicated that Port of Portland's going to go away. Hillsborough is going to go away. Troutdale is going to go away. And the Aurora Airport will sustain some damage, but not enough damage to prevent the small general aviation aircraft like we use in flight training from getting in and out of the airport. So that will do a couple of things. First of all, it will allow the Civil Air Patrol to continue to run their emergency operations out of the airport and support these, the state's Oregon Emergency Services. And will also allow the volunteer pilot groups that are now beginning to come together to be able to go to the other airports for, like Redmond, for example, where emergency supplies and emergency personnel are going to be flying into. And that will allow us to pick them up and bring you the personnel or the supplies back to Aurora for distribution. And although our aircraft are a lot smaller, we do have a lot of them. So those are a couple of the things that we're always really looking at, at here and how we can really assist with the state and the resiliency along those lines. Those are the main things that I had.
Thanks. On the resiliency, I do believe, Betty, correct me if I'm wrong here. We've had some initial FEMA individuals take a look at Aurora just as part of the overall Oregon State plan. Do we know what we're going to do in the future as we, you know, I will say the Oregon has done a really good job on getting the staging bases east of the Cascades. And I know there's now a push to get west of the Cascades. I'm trying to remember where Aurora fits in this. They weren't, they weren't the primary top five, but there was a discussion about, I think there's been FEMA boots on the ground. Betty, correct me if I'm wrong. And Betty, I think you're still muted.
Okay, sorry, I was having some technical problems there. So yes, we have had FEMA has had boots on the grounds at Aurora. And Aurora is one of the 12 staging or FEMA mission airports that are identified for either serving as a staging area and in Aurora's case, more as a FEMA-related mission site. And, and you're correct that the liquefaction damage at that airport is expected to be minimal. There's not looking to be a lot of either, there's no landslides for that airport. And then minimal deformation and, and very little subsidence. So that, that airport certainly has a lot of potential for surviving the event and then serving as staging for somewhat for the, for the government response, but a lot for the civilian-led response.
And in response to Dave, what's the next actions? Do we have any additional studies? What's the next actions for Aurora and resiliencies?
It will be part of, if we're able to get that FEMA grant for a million and a half to look at all of the airports. And it will look at, five of Oregon's airports have done site-specific resiliency studies, but none of the other ones have. So this study, if we're able to get it funded, will look at Aurora and most of the other airports in Oregon to see what is the logical role for them. In Aurora's case, because it is based to so much of Oregon's heavy lift capacity in the rotor-wing aircraft, that lends a very unique role for that airport that most of our other airports will not have just simply because so many of the air ambulance and the helicopters, both heavy lift and regular, are based, that live at Aurora. So that's the next step is, is funding that study and looking at specifically what is Aurora's role. And then that study will also identify what does it currently have? And then what does it need to be able to fulfill the role we think it's going to have? Do they need more generators? They need more fuel storage? Do they need, you know, do you need backup solar generators in case you're, you know, you're running out of fuel? Because we talked about this morning is fuel is going to be an issue. And so that study will look at what do we specifically need at that airport as well as the others? What's it going to cost? And then start looking at a funding strategy on how do we get, get that funded? So that's the next step for Aurora related to resiliency.
And then Betty, when would we know? What, what, when should we be looking for an answer, yea or nay, and whether we got that grant?
By next spring.
Next spring. Okay, so then next spring, Dave, if you'll come out and kind of ping us and ask us where the money is or if we're going to do anything at Aurora, you know, keep us on our toes.
Absolutely. More than happy to do that.
And for the flight school, you know, specific questions? Anything in particular that you were looking at for that? I E, I don't know if there's anything that the ODA or the Board is looking at for flight training other than, we know that, you know, there's a critical shortage of pilots. There's critical shortage of maintainers. The state is trying to work some projects into the high schools where, you know, they make a student could get his private pilot license and then be handed over to a subsequent training for a community college or something similar to that to work toward their, you know, further to commercial license. Anything in particular that you were looking for in concerns with Aurora and flight training?
The main issues that, that we need to work with, and these, these are not problems, they're just things we need to continue to maintain, is that both of the flight schools out here are in fact private businesses. So we need to be sure that, that all of the, the support is in place for the private businesses so we can continue to function, continue to support the state that way. Because of course, anything that we do with fuel sales, of course, all of that is, is money for the state, which is critically important to keep ODA on its feet, because we do like that.
And I will say, you know, so we've seen around the state several little projects that are growing, but that are getting a lot of goodwill in the community. And it's almost universally tied to getting students in high schools. First, their solo, their, their, their first, you know, VFR flight, flight license and trying to get some mechanics courses in conjunction with the high school working with an airport. There's, every community that we've been into that has such a program has loved it. So I will offer that. It doesn't really do necessarily in your business profile, but reaching out and trying to work with your local high school is, is a great way to get some community support if you have any extra bandwidth to offer at all. So, okay. Go ahead.
We're, we're fortunate at Aurora that we do have some local high schools, school districts that we work with very closely. So we are happy to be having, having that relationship already. And of course, we want to keep it growing.
Yeah, that's awesome. Okay.
Chair Meeker, I wanted to, wanted to follow on, on the emergency preparedness issue and that we're, I was hoping the discussion was going to lead next into the future vision of the management of the airport. We met with Betty and with Director Stansbury, I guess, and also with Mike Kereman from the Government's Office over a year and a half ago and started discussing the capability to study. But this is an example of, I think, where, you know, us as business people and the business owners at the airport, we got together and, and we've conducted and produced a major document that looks at a lot of exactly what Director Stansbury talked about. We know we have the capacity that there are airports in Southern Oregon that do have heavy lift helicopters, but they're not proximate to a major metro area like we are. It, it's not just the big helicopters. There's two companies, our company that I work with and one of our competitors, Winco, that when the power lines go down, our aircraft are there to get the power lines back up. And we work with the heavy lift helicopter guys. It's, it's not just about moving bodies and, and supplies. It's about rebuilding the infrastructure and there's not a lot, a lot around here. Dave Wagner talked a little bit about the, the smaller aircraft, but I think AOP has come out and explained that when the event happens, it's, it's, any event around the nation has happened. It takes government probably 48 to 72 hours to actually start doing anything. But general aviation volunteer pilots will be in the air as soon as they can get their hangar doors open. And they have those capabilities. We don't have to wait. There, there's no restriction unless the FAA imposes flight restrictions, but there's no restrictions to us responding with helicopters or aircraft. We've gone so far as started having discussions with the Oregon National Guard on, about our emergency preparedness capabilities to include the surrounding farm fields. We've discussed, we've already had discussions with the surrounding farmers who own those fields. Because if you look at it, you know, from the high level, this proximate to the metro area, there's going to be within probably 72 to hours to a week. There'll be, there'll be quite a bit of, quite a bit of, hold on, I gotta punch that off. There's got to be a lot of military staging areas for like a combat support hospital that would be brought in or field logistics. We're also proximate to water supply. And as long as there is electricity with generation, remember Electrical Utility Construction Company with relationships with the utilities, we have access to generators and such. We've already looked at studies of what we can do to get our hangars back opening in and get power to the airfield. I guess what I'm, what I'm getting at is, what I'd like to do is move forward with a closer public-private partnership. So that however we come up with a group that does it, representing the airport, is more actively engaged and involved in the decisions that are made at the airport or about the airport. Because we're private business, we can move a lot faster than government. We can move way quicker. I mean, I, I don't think the state necessarily has a relationship, a business relationship with Portland General Electric, but multiple businesses at the airport do. And we've already entered conversations with PGE about generation or about solar panels, about, you know, those kind of things at the airport and ties to the system so that we can isolate the airport without backfeeding PGE or having to wait for PGE to get the best back up. I guess my point is, is if we wait for funding, it's, I'm not saying it's too late. I want the funding. But by engaging with us and, and having us be at the table actively and partnered in the decision-making about the airport, I think ODA would be, and the state as a whole, would enjoy a far larger benefit and a far better-prepared airport than I, I, I don't mean to be insulting, but I think then the state could do on their own. And I think the airport, because of our relationship based on the past history with the different families at the airport, how they've been over backwards to work with the state. I mean, it's evidence that we're dedicated to doing this. I think somehow we just need to take advantage of it.
Let me ask this, Betty, just because it's an interesting thought. I mean, I know we're waiting for funding and, and once we get the funding, then we can see man, and there's a major assessment. Before then, is there any possibility to at least outline what capabilities there are? And even without FEMA, if there's some untapped capabilities that exist at Aurora that can, that, you know, like I said, like Bruce or like Tony says, doesn't need funding, it just needs some investigation and that, that information brought forth. Is, is there, you know, do you have the bandwidth to kind of join with them and kind of take an initial look before we get any funding? Or do you just, do we need to wait for the funding?
We can do that for, for, for one airport. If we're going to try to do it for all 97, say, no, we don't have bandwidth. But if we're looking at a single airport like Aurora, then yeah, we can do that.
Would you have any idea what kind of information would be useful? Because it'd be nice as, not only for your own awareness of, that you can bring assets to the table, say at a Cascadia Rising, you can say, hey, Aurora has this. You have this information already in hand. But also do kind of double up on that information and take it to FEMA when we do get the funds for an more extended assessment. Do you have a feeling of what kind of information you need to flesh out that individuals will need to know beyond just ODA and beyond Aurora?
My first thought is inventory, facilities and equipment that are there and what those, that the equipment is there, what its capabilities are. We know we have an extensive air ambulance service there. We know we have Wilson Construction and HTS and Columbia helicopters. But I don't have a real good idea, you know, off the top of my head, if you ask me, how many helicopters and what type does Columbia Aviation have based at that airport? I could not tell you. I don't know how many helicopter ambulances Life Flight has. So I'm sure that Tony Helbling will, and Bruce and Dave can tell me all those things. I, I just don't know it off the top of my head. So having a cheat sheet of capability is helpful. So we know, you know, what's there and, and then the other inventory items we would need to know. We already know what the fuel capacity is there. What's the alternate energy generation capability? capabilities for either, you know, generators or solar or whatever is there? Is there locations where we could use for either storage of supplies, processing of as as goods are brought into, for example, to Redmond is is going to be a staging airport? And then from there, we've got to hop over the mountains into the valley. What storage capabilities are there? What forklift ability is there to get it off of the aircraft? So just nuts and bolts stuff that, what are the what are the capabilities right now? And are there any gaps in there that that we might need to address? For example, at Redmond, Redmond's asked, you know, if they're going to serve as a staging airport, could they get a couple more forklifts to get all the stuff off of the aircraft that are going to be bringing all this, these resources in? They're going to need some extra forklifts just to get them off. So that's the kind of thing that I would would look at that we could do now, you know, just Aurora specific.
Something else you can do is is look at a staging area FEMA has, that's when they were, when they came down to Klamath, they needed two to three hundred or four hundred Conex building, you know, or Conex containers, there's forty footers, you know, and they're talking two to three hundred, we're talking about, you know, closing a portion of our of our Crosswood runway and just stacking them along so so it could be on pavement. And so something you might want to look at is a staging area for large.
For bulky stuff.
You know, local stuff.
And in Aurora's case, unfortunately, there's not a lot of undeveloped land, other than there's what used to be called the church property is at the moment is undeveloped. But beyond that, the Aurora Airport is pretty well developed, and there's just not a lot of vacant land for staging of large equipment like that. And the other thing you have to look at on-site, specific airports is if, when the event happens, if what is predicted happens and we lose, you know, sixteen thousand miles of road, then ground access, even just getting those semis to the airport and then dispersing them out from the airport then becomes the challenge. And what you don't want is a bottleneck of a whole bunch of semis clogging up and nowhere for them to go, either unload with supplies on them or or just waiting for supplies. So that's another challenge that we have to add into valley airports that we don't have to to focus on so much on Central Oregon airports, which will be spared the brunt of of the damage that that is going to happen to the roadway system. So again, that's why we want to look at overall, look at all of the airports and look at, you know, what what roles can they play? The Central Oregon airports and the Eastern Oregon airports that will have minimal, if any, damage can certainly play some specific roles that the valley and the coastal airports will not be able to.
I can round this back to Aurora. I think there's some goodness here. In the bigger picture, Aurora sits next to I-5. I would ask that you, you know, part of this discussion is you need to get with the governor's office and find which bridges around I-5 have are going are in the process of being strengthened for a nine-point-oh earthquake. I would imagine that the that the bridges over I-5. Anyway, there's a larger picture, we can't discuss it all here, but it sounds like if there's a role, if Bruce and David and Tony are offering, they can give some information. We'll need to marry it up with the governor's office to make sure that the lines of communication into Aurora exist. But that that discussion's been going on going a long time. There's bridges that are already been fortified to nine-point-oh. So we know kind of an idea where the lines of communications are going to be, or at least now or in the future. But I do think there's, this is, this would, this could work. This could be something that if the the private entities at Aurora is offering, this is something that perhaps not only could they give us an inventory, but they could tell us what relationships, how fast they can get power, or who they could get, what what other capabilities they bring, because they know other businesses around the around the nation and around the state.
Sure.
So I I think it may be worth, you know, after this, kind of sitting down and thinking and in our head, kind of walk some info, what questions we need to ask? And then maybe we could get together, you know, separately, once every two months or something like that, to start funneling some stuff out that would be useful in a Cascadia Rising exercise at the state level. And then for the FEMA guys and their assessment levels that follow on, you know, hopefully next year. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
And if we have, if we have folks offering to do work for us.
Sure.
We've got, we've got ample work that needs to be done.
Certainly, certainly.
Go ahead, Bruce.
A little quicker than my unmute. I'd like to get back to your question on Dave on what you can do, and this is really basic, but it's critically important, is just the protection of the airport itself. I was, one of the, one of the renters took a beautiful photograph of the airport while on final approach just last week, and it stood out, the the land that the master plan had us acquire, had the airport acquiring off the south end, you know, it would be devastating for the airport for that to get built on, for safety, for noise. It's kind of a classic across the the nation is an airport sitting out in the country, Aurora nineteen forty-three, and the city grows up around it, you know, Charbonneau is there, but to try to keep that from continuing, people creating problems by by building right off the end of the runway. And so I I think an effort in protecting the airport, meaning the the real estate around the airport, so no one gets disturbed by by building a house on it, or so safety isn't compromised by by a tower, something for avoiding this incident, an emergency. Just three other quick points. For people that aren't real involved with the Aurora Airport, I think this probably goes without saying, but but it is important to realize that what what a de facto emergency airport we have been over the, I've been flying a jet off there for decades on medical flights. As you know, there's, of course, we talked about Lifeflight, and they have PC-12s also, and two of the five biggest heavy lift helicopter operators on the planet. Oh, yes, and and just last summer with the fires based out of there. It is important to coordinate and organize it, but we've been, we've been meeting that, filling that goal for decades. I think the, something to get out of this meeting, and I'm really happy to to help and volunteer, is is to work together. It's the, like I said earlier, it's been a public-private since nineteen forty-three, but as the private grows, the the possibility of miscommunication or lack of communication grows, there's little little operators out there with a ten thousand dollar investment in a hangar on a small airplane. And there's people with multiple companies and individuals, multi-millions, but they're not any part of a network, they're just a landowner, and they may or may not have any idea what's going on at ODA and the future of the airport and the plans. And so i- in the past, I've, of course, got hundreds of hours volunteering for master plans and whatnot, coordinating and communicating, but I really like both Martha and Betty brought up the the importance of that, continuing to work together in a in an organized way and making sure everyone gets heard, that the airport users are accurately represented. The only, the last thing is the state ramp. Betty mentioned that the very true fact, there's not a bunch of vacant real estate, it's either, either has plans to be developed or is developed on the on the ODA land, of course, with Highway fifty-one, it's it's a one-sided airport. But there is a significant state ramp in the center field and part aircraft occasionally pay for Oregon Department of Aviation for the use of parking on that ramp, but that can certainly be planned to move those airplanes out. It's it's a significant piece of blacktop in every master plan, the last one included, shows additional ramp being built there, and that can be a huge asset. It is a huge asset, and properly planned can be irreplaceable. Vacant, black, paved, smooth surface right in midfield. That's pretty much my, that's it.
Thanks, Bruce. And, you know, you mentioned kind of a good point, you talk about you do all the work during the master plan. It'll be interesting to see if, you know, we get this master plan done, we would like to stay in touch with you all versus we all show up at Aurora, we do this master plan once every ten years, and then, you know, you kind of go on autopilot and you don't see a lot of lot of us until ten years later. It'd be nice, we we need to figure out how to get out there with y'all and be in the community more often than we will. I think that's, that's.
I completely agree, and it's, and people just get stuck on their, I mean, critical, important, life-saving and or aircraft repairing, training businesses, they get focused on that day and day out and lose the lose the link to Oregon Department of Aviation.
So we're going to work, we can't get that, get that, you know, tighter between, you know, the board and ODA and and the community out there.
Chairmaker, what I'd like to add into this is is we move this forward, since the beginning of this airport, it's it's been a an un-formalized public-private partnership, and and we've provided a lot of examples of that. Because this airport, out of the twenty-eight airports that ODA is responsible for, is is a complete and total anomaly when compared to the other airports. I think one of the things that I saw was we we have between twelve hundred and fifteen hundred jobs at this airport, the next airport closest to us that ODA is responsible for directly has twenty-one jobs. We're completely and totally different. No other airport that ODA manages has the capacities that we have to help with emergency preparedness. They don't have, it's not just the space, but the proximity and and the type aircraft and the type skills and talents that we have in our back shops. Nobody else has the hangar space that we have. And in that light, I I'm putting out there to the entire board and to chairmaker, because our group wants to do this. We need to shift gears with ODA and the OAB. We we need to have an active seat at the table where we're partnering some sort of formal partnership, some sort of formalized group committee established to manage the airport. ODA has a staff of twelve. All airports our size are managed by at least in at least three to five other people. Port of Portland has hundreds of people to manage three airports, and I credit Portland's International is a huge airport, but Hillsborough is not huge and Troutdale is not huge, but they still got hundreds and hundreds of people to manage their airport. And ODA, God bless them, they've got twelve, and they've got to focus on twenty-eight, and we're a completely different animal than the other twenty-seven airports. We're not better, we're not longer, we'd like to be, what what we always say, Bruce, we want to be a number eleven out of twenty-eight. That's what we want to be. That's all we want to be, just number eleven with runway length. But the point being is, we're completely different. We're closer to a PDX or a Eugene or a K Falls than we are a Condon or a Pacific City, which is typically what ODA manages. And I think it's important that ODA is involved with the rest of the airports in the state, like Redmond and those, and and focusing on a forklift and getting them. But I think the focus at Aurora needs to be on the actual management of the airport. The volume of time ODA spends on twenty-seven airports is contrasted to our airport, I I think is out of balance, especially with what we bring with respect to revenue to ODA or tax revenue to the state of Oregon because of the development at the airport. Most development at airports like Salem Airport, Salem, it's everything is inside the fence, those leased property that's owned by the city, they get the revenue, and and they control those leases, where the state of Oregon doesn't control our properties, and our tax revenue goes to the general fund, and it goes to the local school district, and it goes to local fire district. We're an anomaly, and as such, I think it's time that we stood up some sort of a board or a panel or something that is is formally, I don't know, would be in rule of law or in regulation that ODA could make or something, or the OAB could put in place, where there's a a formalized board consisting of owners or operators at Aurora State Airport that are actively involved at the decision level for the management of the airport. And what that looks like, we can take for another time, but it it's time to shift gears in our traditional model of of how the airport is 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 operated. And I think that was what was called in in Senate Bill six eighty back in two thousand and six that became ORS eight thirty-six. I think that was the vision that Senator Betsy Johnson, who was at the time, just Betsy Johnson, when that was all put together, I think that's the vision that was out there. So with that, I'd leave that invitation open to for us to work with the board to establish that that next, whatever we want to call it, management agency or something, so we can, we can step into the next level or shift that into a higher gear and make this airport even more than what it is.
Well, it's interesting, because, you know, I think everyone would like to have more boots on the ground out there. We now either manage it onsite, somehow we need to get some kind of entity that lives at Aurora, because you just, you don't know the community if you don't live in the community. You know, Carmen Ford wrote that report that the legislator asked her to about Aurora State, you know, he mentioned back then that we we just didn't have enough engagement in the community, or we didn't have boots on the ground there. And so trying to fund that has been an interesting, trying to work something local is, I think, very commendable. You know, the ORS talks about Nirvana would be, you know, you 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 become an airport district and you manage yourself. That's, that's a big step, that's going to the county and having an election, and we may want to, maybe.
Maybe steps.
Maybe.
Small steps.
Maybe, that's, maybe. So, you know, maybe we should try something out as a preliminary, you know, something to get boots on the ground. You know, you're not authorized, the the tax paying, the the spend agency has got to be ODA. They're charged to to be the ultimate authority because they're spending taxpayer dollars, but trying to get, you know, some free help, I'll call it free help, because that's what we want, because ODA can't pay for it at this point. Your offering, I think, it's at least worth talking about. I don't know if we can actually get it done with all the legislative issues, or maybe there's some legal issues, but at a at a high level, it seems if we need to have more engagement, either this group meets with the board and ODA, or somehow we get more conversations between us and the community there. I I think that's, that's is clear, that's been, that we should be told by multiple agencies, we need to do that. So, and it needs to be beyond the master planning process. Master planning process is a great start. We have eighteen months till that process ends, and we need to find something that carries on, the things that unite us, we need to find a tie that keeps us there once that eighteen-month process is complete. So I agree with you, I I like your idea. Let me open it up to to the other board members, just to get, since we're freewheeling, let's bring in everybody. Tom, Hilda, John?
Well, I think, you know, for me, there's a couple of elephants in the room that ultimately need to be talked about, and I'm not going to bring those up up here. I think I have a long history, thirty-six years of managing airports in three different states, and this is a very interesting and very unique, as you mentioned, Tony and and Bruce and David, you know, very unique situation, and so I think it is a challenge. It, from my history, it 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 almost flies in the face of FAA guidance, and that's the part that I struggle with, just from just trying to understand it and want to be a partner, a partner and try to make it work. And so I just want to put that out there. There's a couple of questions that I have, you know, the capital funding is a huge one, and I think an authority or a district or something like that, I think, is the way to go here in this scenario, where you have a director or somebody or a manager, somebody who's there with boots on the ground and coordinating with all of you and working those problems more than Betty can and the whole ODA organization. I think it needs to be more focused, that's my my thought.
Okay, copy that. Tom, anything?
I hit something here, and all of a sudden, I'm not on picture. That's okay. It's what I'm, what I'm hearing is is some thinking that that is kind of thinking outside the box, which typically brings some really, really neat ideas if if we just keep moving and. If we just keep moving in that direction and within the confines of what is legal and what can be done. But just being innovative, I think can, can really make, make something good come out of all this. That's, that's my thoughts, yeah.
Okay, thanks. And having no money can make you really innovative. Because the answer to this is, you know, hiring an airport manager and an airport staff. I mean, really, an airport of this size needs at least two people to run it. We don't have any money to pay for that, so let's innovate.
That's that public-private partnership because we're, we're business people and we, we can figure out ways to sort out things, help things move forward. Part of it is, is the ability to, to work. I mean, I pose a question back to John Barcelou because I, I understand that you're the airport manager down at Clamath Falls.
Yes, sir.
Just out of curiosity, do you know who's at your airfield besides the air guard?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, and that's, I guess that's having that action because John is in an entire public airport. Since we're public-private, we know what's here and to be able to have that seat at the table and work. I mean, we can't decide necessarily on what, how much taxpayer money will be spent on the runway. That's not our decision. But to be able to have that voice to share the information as a partner with the decision makers who will make the decision, that's what we're asking for.
I think that might be.
I think.
Sorry, sorry, you're frozen, I'm sorry. Can you hear me?
We get you now.
Okay. Sorry, Tony, I think that might be an opportunity for Betty and us as the board to go to the legislature and say, look, if the citizens, if the partnerships, if the businesses are paying. Some money to the state government, then why isn't the state government supporting ODA in this effort? I mean, just from a general fund perspective, money's going into the general fund. Why can't some of that general fund money be applied directly to the Aurora Airport Management? That's just a, just.
It's like Tom said, we could come up with some real creative ideas and, and we don't want to do anything illegal at all.
Right.
But we're, it's like you said, John, we're different from anything else you've experienced in your 35 years. But the fact is we're different, so let's take advantage of that legally and let's look at some out of the box thinking.
Sure.
Well, if nothing else, why don't we start with a little bit of, you know, what we can do for resiliency? I think you've clearly shown that there's maybe some public-private partner that we can join together and do stuff. We can maybe make some, some luck here. I think lucky people are those who just plan ahead. So I am interested in that. And then if we've got some additional ways, I'm interested in how to increase, to make. The conversation last beyond the master plan. We've got to have a link that brings the board, ODA and members of Aurora together after the master plan. Because this, touching you guys once every 10, 10 years is, is not working. So if we can start with the smaller projects, start with this, this public-private on resiliency and see if we can grow that into a board. Because once again, you've got to get agreement with all the business partners there at the airport. You know, there's some internal working that the, you guys at the airport have to talk together if you can do this. And you know, let this kind of bubble and form it over the next 12 months as we kind of work the resiliency. And maybe we can get, move this ball forward on, you know, maybe Pammy and AAIA and something else all come together and. Something new happens, I don't know. But I do think we've got to somehow strengthen the links that we have to Aurora. To make sure that we, like you said, you are different and you probably need a little bit more engagement than what, say, a Pacific City does. Betty, you're the, you're the expert on this, I, you know, we got to go slow. We won't invent this overnight and I'm not sure where it's going to go after resiliency. But your thoughts on just, you know, do we continue the discussion?
Okay, I certainly think there's value in continuing that discussion on identifying additional needs for the airport that we may, may have overlooked. An example was a couple of days ago, the tower chief told us about a need for, for IFR clearance for the spinner. That we don't have one in that facility and that everything is having to come from Portland, TRACON manually to the controller up in the tower who has to write it down and then commit. And that's a really inefficient way of doing things. And so the tower chief brought that to our attention. I was not aware of that until a couple of days ago. And I think that's a project that's worth pursuing and I'm certain that all of you have ideas of other projects that we have perhaps overlooked. That are not just about the length of the runway. You know, and getting the trees cleared off the end. So I think there's value in continuing the discussion and, and certainly any offers of assistance. We can't manage these 28 airports without assistance of volunteers, whether it's OPA groups or EAA or 99s or Friends groups. We really need to, to continue to pursue those partnerships where we can help each other out. You are our eyes and ears on the ground at that airport. When something bad happens, you're the first ones there. We're still half an hour to 45 minutes away. And so I think there's a, there's value in, in continuing that discussion and specifically on targeted projects, the things that are coming up. All of you are serving on the master plan. Effort that we're just getting started underway. If we decide we're going to try to take on this project for getting a spinner for the tower, we will need assistance, all your assistance on, on trying to get funding for that. And then, or if we can locate a, a used piece of equipment coming off of another tower somewhere that we can, can use. So I think there's certainly a lot of opportunities there where we would, and we would welcome continuing that conversation with you. And then I see we're coming up on 25th, 210. Did we want to talk about non-resilience related, to talk about projects? Were there other things that, that we want to talk about today?
Yeah, we need to give a picture of what, what you guys are going to be seeing at the airport. But I think for right now, Betty, if you could get with Tony and the gang. And it'd be interesting to flesh out, you know, what do they think they could bring to a Cascadia event in the first 24 hours? What could they bring within the first seven days? And what could they bring long-term as an, you know, an operating location for the, for the six months that follow a Cascadian event? It'd be interesting to see what the, you know, utilizing the businesses there, what they think and how fast they can mobilize. And how much they can use their contacts with businesses across the nation to expedite services and goods here to the local area.
Okay.
And if we could take that to the legislature and show, look what Aurora is offering. Maybe we can get their attention for some continued, you know, funding to help us make our own luck should the Cascadia event happen.
Okay.
All right, now, okay, so let me turn it over to you because I know you got a presentation on upcoming just. Projects at the airport that ODA has scheduled or is looking to schedule.
Okay, if you'll bear with me just for a moment, I'm going to see if I can share my screen. Okay, do you see a screen that says Aurora and it has an outdated photo on it of the airport? Okay, so this was just a summary for, for some of our, our new board members who might not be as familiar with Aurora Airport. Just to, you know, just a recap of where it is, what it is. So 144 acres of state loaned land and as, as Tony Hugling had mentioned, considerable amount of land immediately adjacent to it that is privately owned. It's been owned by Department of Aviation since 1953. And as Bruce had mentioned, it's been in operation since about 1943. It's the fourth busiest airport in Oregon, 400-based aircraft, fire suppression, air ambulance, 49 helicopters, including the heavy lifts. 1,500 employees, 1.9 million in local taxes, as we said, substantial through-the-fence operations. And so what you really want to see is, you know, what are the plans for projects coming up for this airport? So Martha, as you mentioned, we're getting ready to start the master plan project here in about a month. And then beyond the master plan, which we think is 18 to 24 months, the next projects that are coming up, right now we are doing. Survey and appraisals on, I think it's around 25 parcels off the, the approach ends, the ends of the, of the runway. And just off the sides, doing appraisals on parcels that have been identified with having trees that are too tall. The appraisal is the, is one of the first steps necessary in acquiring an easement. So that's what we're doing right now is the survey work and the appraisals, which will be followed by an offer and then by easement acquisition. With federal funding for the easement acquisition in '22. Followed by tree removal in '23. And all the projects that you see here are federally funded projects. And so we must comply with federal requirements in order to gain this funding. And in particular in easement acquisition and tree removal, there is a very specific rigorous process that we must comply with if we want federal funding for it. So you see the projects include acquiring the easements in '22, removing trees in '23. Doing, starting the environmental assessment for the runway extension in '24. Also in '24, starting the design work for doing a replacement of the three-inch overlay on the existing runway is one of the first things that we will do. As part of the overall runway extension project. First thing we need to do is replace that 17-year-old three-inch overlay on the existing runway that is now at the end of its life and needs replacement. So in '24, we'll start the EA, that's about a two-year process. We do the design work on removing and replacing the, the existing overlay. '25, replace the overlay, '27 by the land and do the design work for the runway extension and '28 construct the extension. So that's kind of the timeframe that we're looking at. So again, all of this is dependent upon state or federal funding. Right now, we are focusing on trying to get federal funding for it. But if another funding opportunity comes up, such as state funding or local funding, then we can certainly look at that and that might affect timeline. But right now, we are going on the assumption that this is going to be federal funding for 90% of the cost of the, of all of these projects with a local match of 10%. So from '22 through '27, the total project cost is about 12.4 million, local match will be 10% or 1.25 million. And we are trying to figure out where we're going to come up with the 10% match at this point.
Hey Betty.
That's a, that's a, yes.
I just, regardless of the run, let's say the runway extension gets, gets hung up for whatever reason, just give a worst case scenario. Does the, we need to redo that, like I said, the runway overlay is 17 years old, coming up on end of life at 20. If we don't do the extension, does that change any of the dates for the rehab itself?
No, this is, this is looking at a phased approach to repairing the existing runway and then extending it. So what you see in '24 is, is the design work and then followed in '25 by taking off that three-inch overlay and replacing it. And then, then followed after that would be the thousand-foot extension. So this is, again, this is all dependent upon finding the funding for it. But this is what the request that we have made of the FAA is, this is what we're thinking the process will be. So. Any questions?
And this is in the FAA's five-year plan already, is that correct?
No, this is what we have proposed. So we go in once a year in October and give a, you know, this is what our ask is for the next five years. And so this is what we have asked for, that we just submitted recently. This is, you know, what we think, we think that they'll fund. We, we won't know for certain if they will agree to our requests or in the order that we want or the, when we want until about February or March. After they look at our requests and the other 55 Oregon airports that are eligible for federal funding. And the 60 airports up in Washington that are eligible, they crunch all the requests and then they prioritize and spit out a list and say, okay, you asked for this, but this is how, what we're going to fund and when we're going to fund it.
So Betty, these are, these are competing, Aurora Airport is entitled to 150,000, is that correct a year? This are discretionary dollars over 150,000.
Absolutely, yeah. So what John is referring to is that most federally eligible airports in Oregon get a guaranteed of $150,000 a year. It's called an entitlement. And then anything beyond that has to be what we call a discretionary grant. And discretionary projects compete against each other, both in the region and nationally. And so in this case, yes, anything over 150 is going to be a competitive discretionary.
That was the point I wanted you to make was make sure that everyone understood that it was a competitive, a very competitive process. Discretionary dollars. It's one thing to get the 150, that's kind of an, almost an automatic, as long as there's money in the, at the fed level. But discretionary is competition, you're competing with others across the country.
Yes. All right, any other, any questions from anyone else?
I guess a question.
Sure.
Hey, are we, are we applying for the stimulus package, the COVID money that was allotted to, by the federal government, to the FAA for transportation infrastructure improvements? Because of the pressures of COVID?
Okay, so if, are you referring to CARES, CHRISA or ARPA? So those were all coronavirus relief funds. So back in last year, around March last year was the first one, which was called CARES. And those funds, oh gosh, I think was 425,000 that we got out of CARES. Hold on a second. And then CHRISA, we got a little bit and then ARPA.
I think in answer to your question, Tom, I think the, or Tony, the answer is yes, we, we have been getting some funding.
Yeah, so CARES, we got 425, CHRISA was 205 and ARPA was 428. And all of that money was used for operating costs of the agency to help offset the loss in revenue from the fuel tax. Again, most of our operating budget and all of our grant program funds come out of the aviation fuel tax. And that has had a significant decline over the past 18 months. And so we had to use those federal funds from CARES, CHRISA and ARPA to offset, to pay operating expenses of the agency. But if you're thinking about the infrastructure package, the proposed one coming up, if it will ever get across the finish line and Congress will approve something. Once we know, have a better idea of what they're going to approve, then we'll be able to see, is there some other funding opportunities? The last version that was out a couple of months ago, increased funding for, for, for airports pretty significantly. Including for general aviation airports. But what comes out of Congress this week, next week, next month, next year, then who knows? At this point, if there's even going to be an infrastructure package at all. There might be some funding opportunities there if that infrastructure package can get across the finish line.
Tony, for your, for the infrastructure dollars that have fallen, you had to also have projects that were shovel-ready. Now, the runway extension is not shovel-ready by any means. It's, it's not even, except we got to get through the master plan process so that, we couldn't have set dollars for that if we, if we could. If they gave it, if they came and gave us world wide, we couldn't have set it anyway, so. It's got to be shovel.
I was looking more at the tree removal. Because at one time, the tree removal, the state had funds to do the tree removal and for some reason, we didn't do it. And now there's, there's no funds to do the tree removal.
And now there's, there's no funds to do the tree removal. And now we're going to go ask the F A A for funds to do the tree removal.
Okay, I'm not real clear. If you're thinking just within the past year on the, the coronavirus relief funds, Chris. Cares, Chris and ARPA. That money was always intended to pay for operating expenses of the agency. So are you thinking, I'm not sure what you're thinking, thinking about.
Betty, have, have we delayed the, the tree? I mean, the tree removal has been delayed, has it not?
No, we're going forward with first, we've got to get easements. Okay. And, and, and we've got federal funding to start that process again. The first thing we have to do is appraise the property and determine a value for. For the easement and for the taking of the trees and that processes and it is in progress now. And that's what, once we have made those offers, then we'll. If they accept, then we can go ahead and purchase the easement. If they decline, then they can counter. And then if, if nothing else, then we go into involuntary acquisition via the courts to acquire the easement. But one way or another, we will acquire an easement. And at that point, for property owners who are unwilling to allow tree removal. We, we compel them through purchase of the easement. So. So, you know, one thing, you know. We might be able to do with, with your help is. On the north end, the, the worst penetrators are on two properties. And I think you know which ones they are. One property owner has already told us absolutely no, they will not allow their trees to be touched. The other property owner seems to be more, more amenable to it. Ideally, if, if that property owner could take the trees down themselves, or you guys could go over and take down the trees for him, just knock them over. It's a lot faster and easier than if we as the state agency do it. There are state processes that we have to follow. So that's the, you know, that's an immediate task that we could use some help with is. Is those trees on the property owner that is willing to allow the trees to come down? Just find a way to go over and take a, take something, knock them over or do something. So I'm not sure if I answered your question or not.
Heather's got some information.
Heather's got her hand up. Okay.
Hi, I just wanted to, to clarify one piece of the process. And that was the starting of the environmental process. All projects have an environmental. And so prior to. The easement acquisition process, we had to do the environmental process for the tree removal. So that was part of it, Tony. So it seemed like we weren't doing the project. It's just a, a long project.
And Betty, then maybe one thing that we just want to have a constant update at every board meeting is how we're doing with obstacle removal across the state.
Okay, sure. Okay, be happy to do that.
Sorry, I'm on a job site over in Spokane. I have horrible cell reception. I'm not in my office, but. Let's chat about tree cutting later. I promise I wouldn't get down in the proverbial weeds on stuff.
But we may talk about needing your help with where we can get some local assistance on the obstacle removal. You know, once again, we may add that to the. You know, the resiliency discussion on another public, private partnership we can work on.
You know, it'd be a lot easier to work to, we'd, we'd be happy, the airport group would be happy to approach the property owner with, with the details of the location of the trees.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks, Bruce.
Okay, that's it from, for, for my slides for today. Were there any other questions? Anything else that? That we can, that you would like to discuss?
No, um, you know, I think trying to figure out how we get a continuing conversation with you all down there. I think that's worthy. We, we hear that loud and clear from you all. So we will figure out exactly how we do that. How are we going to take more than one discussion? But you know, let's start with the resilience. That seems to be something, boy, you guys can offer right now. I am very interested in, in hearing more about that. And then also we can roll in on the, on the obstacle remover. That'd be great. And between that, we can figure out maybe something longer lasting that keeps us linked. Going forward. Tony, Bruce?
Yes, I just on, on behalf of our group, like to thank the, the board for giving us the time to chat with you today. Would like to, you know, capitalize on this and keep it ongoing. And like you said, Chair is move forward with. An establishment of, of some sort of group or advisory committee or something informally or formally. To actively move the airport forward. Because I mean, we're just different is what it comes down to. And. It's, we're a, a, a huge opportunity for the state to be ready for. I, I don't want anything bad to happen, but if it does, we're ready to help. So, thank you.
Thank you, Tony. Bruce, anything?
I think it's, it's the epitome of synergy. We both need this communication. And it's just, it's just a matter of. It's not really heavy lifting, but it. Devils in the deep down. In the group together, getting a way of communicating. There has been an onsite manager for years in the past, back when Betsy Donson was the Oregon, was the aviation manager. There was a Columbia helicopter rented out one of the offices in the building that I, I leased for so many years. And then, and then there was a trailer put on the, right next to the tower for a couple of years anyway, kind of an expensive product, process. There was an O D A employee out there, but it did. It didn't work as nearly as well as it could. I think it was about communication, you know, just being out there doesn't automatically. Put you in touch with all the businesses. So it's not going to be simple, but, but not real tough either. Just. Just getting after it and putting, putting, putting the process together. So thank you very much.
I, I didn't know that O D A had somebody at the airport.
Yep, for a few years.
Wow. So John, that'll be interesting, you know, because you run an airport. It'll be interesting to see, you know, what your processes are on how you maintain, you know. Active and, and strong communications with your folks out there. And if we can cherry pick any of your ideas.
Yeah, it definitely a challenge because the idea is that, like I said, you, some things you have to do that aren't necessarily popular. Those are the challenges. Those are the challenging times, right?
But I'm willing to bet John knows each and every tenant. Right off the top, which is, which can't say for Aurora. And I think. We don't have to make a huge change to open that line of communication.
No, and I, and I remember when I was in Alaska, just doing, we had several through the fence operations at various Alaskan airports and. How, how difficult the, the process that was just in dealing with those tenants. And I know, I mean, the state of Oregon also has. Independence as well with a lot of through the fence operations. I know you mentioned an independence earlier.
Anyone else?
Glad to help.
Tom Hilda, anything?
No, John answered my question.
Okay.
No, I'm all good.
All right. Well, I don't want to cut you short, but I think we got a way out of, so how do we? What's the next steps on O D A and the Aurora guys getting together to start flushing down at least. The beginning of some hard information on what can be done when needed for a Cascadia event. And what can be done on the obstacle removal? What, what's the next step, guys? Who's gonna call? Who's gonna call who?
I'd like to get a map from O D A, specifically the single property owner in the north end, just kind of one, one at a time.
Okay, we can do that. So maybe. Before the end of this month, we can circle back and have a, a group, the, the, the four. Or five of us from that are on this call. And anyone else from Aurora that you would like to have on it? And we can just do another Zoom call and start looking at. What do you have up there right now? And then. Is, is a couple of weeks sufficient amount of time to do that, to get, to gather that inventory? Or do you want to make it toward more towards the end of this month? What do you think? Is, is that, is a couple of weeks enough time to put that initial list together? Or would you like closer towards the end of the month? I don't know if you saw the presentation this morning, but. The, the, the quote that stuck with me is by an engineer, a, a, a geotech engineer who's been doing some of the, the studies at. Scapus and Newport and Grants Pass and, and Hillsborough. And, and her assessment is we're nine and a half months pregnant. And so. Sooner is better than later because Murphy's law, and Murphy seems to be my middle name anymore. Is that this event's going to happen sooner rather than later. And the more prepared that we can be for that, the better all of Oregon will be if, if we can do that. So. What do you think towards the end of the month?
This is twenty, I'd like to set up a call next week so we can. Get that discussion that we already started, but you go in. I think we have a, some information gathered already and we can share that with you.
Okay. All right. If you want to propose a couple of dates, I think next week my calendar is fairly full. But propose a couple of dates and we can see. And if not, let's see next week. I think the following week, at least, you know, my, my calendar is a little bit more open. But if you'll just suggest a couple of dates, we can, we can get something set up.
Okay, I'll gather us together and we'll get you some dates.
Okay.
Excellent. Thank you.
And Betty, would you care if I just happened to listen in? I got an interview on resilience.
Not at all. In fact, if you would like.
Okay, and my time, I'm a retiree. Whatever you guys decide, I'll just join in.
Oh, I know how busy you are.
All right, well, cool. Okay, so that'll start that discussion and I look forward to it. And, and guys, thanks for, you know, for showing up. I, I think getting folks at the airport, helping the airport is, you know, you know, one, I'll take the free manpower, but. It just makes better decisions when you have the local voice kind of guiding you along. I really do believe that. So I look forward to seeing what we can flesh out in the immediate future and then something longer term. I think we'll, it would be a, would be great if we can get there. Cool. Okay, so I'm guess going back to the regular agenda schedule, that concludes today's working session. For the strategic offsite, is that correct, Betty?
That's correct.
Okay, so with that, then I think if you guys want to take a break and wait. It'd be about an hour before we get the schedule, the executive session for the executive director performance feedback, or do you just want to? Call this a close and then convene on the executive session to do Betty's assess, feedback. Your choice, board members and Betty. Do you need a break or do you want to go, go straight into it?
My schedule is, is flexible. I've set aside today just for the board. So whatever is the board's preference.
Board members out there, do you want to take a break or you want to go for right into the executive session? John, which?
Hilda, you say go forward?
Roger.
Okay. Any issues with keeping?
So for record keeping. May I suggest that we log off and log on to the. The Zoom for that because it will be a separate recording. So we've got to take a break and you've got to log in on the other Zoom.
Okay, how about we do this? Come back at, does ten minutes or you want fifteen minutes to get everything closed out and restarted? Ten, fifteen, ten.
Give me, give me some time.
Cut, we can, you can, we can, you take your time. You tell us when you want us to come back.
Give us, give me the fifteen because I've got to get into that Zoom. And make sure everything's working and you guys need to log on, take your bio breaks and so forth. So fifteen, so nobody's running around.
All right, fifteen it is. See everybody at two fifty.
Okay.
Kathy?
Yes, yes, sir.
You send me the login information, please.
I will do that.
Can you make that the two of us? Because I'm digging and I can't find the, the Zoom meeting number.
Okay, yeah, it's, it was a meeting invite to your calendar.
Oh, okay. It's just when I clicked on the link, it took me to this one.
Right, but there's a separate one and it was only sent in, in invite, but I'll resend it right now.
Okay.
Perfect. Okay.
All right.
Right.
So recording. All right.
Everybody in fifteen, okay.
End of the recording.